All right, gang. Mahalo Nui for joining us online. Everybody can hear good thumbs up. Mahalo, thank you. Well, it is seven o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and get ourselves started here. We are happy to welcome everyone to the Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board Meeting Number Thirty-Two. This is Monday, August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is seven o'clock PM. We will call the meeting to order at such time. My name is Chair Kimiono Kane, happy to host this evening's meeting for our community to get together and talk a little bit about what is happening here for our community. We'll run through some really important information and then we'll go through our agenda. But basically, the purpose of the Neighborhood Board and the Board's Neighborhood Plan is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Engagement is very simple. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon online and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. For those in person, just raising your hand would be sufficient, and then we will call you up to the mic. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. You can unmute and mute yourself. For those who are dialing in on the phone by pressing star six, please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comment or question. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. As a reminder, we recognize that there can be some conversations that get very emotional, so we remind everyone to practice and live within aloha, to have akahi modesty, loahi unity, olu olu pleasantries, ha'aha humility, and ahonui patience as a used status of conduct for all that are participating. The Board may take action on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law, HRS ninety-two. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless it is added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, nine out of thirteen members of this board, is needed to add an item to the agenda. Adding an item to the agenda, however, is not permitted if one, the item of, is to be added, is of reasonable major importance and/or two, action on the item by the Board will affect a significant number of persons. Determination of whether a specific matter may be added to an agenda must be done on a case-by-case basis. For those that are participating, please silence all electronic devices. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that for our Board members, when we do take roll call vote or any voting this evening, you will be asked to put your cameras on. With that being said, we again welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. We're going to ask if we have anyone that would like to offer pule for us to get ourselves started this evening?
Sure, I'll offer pule.
Thank you, Brenda. Mahalo.
Mahalo Kea kula for gathering us here tonight, and we look to you to give us wisdom, to give us unity, to give us your aloha, your power. And we ask that you would guide us as we meet today. Thank you for each person present. We ask you for strength to listen, to act, to do what is pono. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you very much, Auntie Brenda. Mahalo. We are participating in public here at the Waimea Nalo Public Library, and then we also have a WebEx option for those that are joining us on virtual. So whichever one of you folks have joined us on, we thank you folks for making time this evening. We're going to go through a roll call. Members, when your name is called, please acknowledge your presence. Mahalo.
Hey, when I call your name, please let me know when you're, if you're present or on virtual. Kanani Gramberg? Kimiono? Thank you.
Here.
Jenna?
Here, virtual.
Thank you. Lourdes? Moata?
Yo.
Patrol, thank you. Kapialani?
Here, virtual.
Thank you. Ted? Sultan? Brenda?
Here.
Retro, thank you. And then Chassidy? And Kuikai? Okay, with that, we have five board members present. We do not make the quorum yet.
Thank you very much, members. Mahalo Rachel for that information. We're going to move into our next item, a message from our kupuna. Do we have any kupuna here in person or online that would like to share a memory or something about Waimea Nalo, maybe a hope or dream? How you doing, Ovada Anko? You want to share any thoughts and reflections? We've been creating some time in the agenda to just get the voices of our kupuna documented and just hear their stories. We've had people share growing up stories or reflections, but it is a place for those who want to do so, if you would like to share. We'd be honored to have your voice. I can bring it to you, but we're going to put you on camera, so yeah. And if you could just introduce yourself for the time.
My name is Dave Larson. I've lived here in Waimea Nalo in the same place sixty years. I came here when I was twenty-one. In the last sixty years, was probably the best years of my life and knowing the people that I met right here in Waimea Nalo. I've never been anyplace else other than right here. There's a plaque down on, on the ramp that we put together. And on that plaque, it's a lot of names. And all those names are there for a reason, for the kids to come by or anybody. And if they see, happen to see their name, their history is is for real. That's about it, really.
Thank you, Anko De. Mahalo for that memory. Some of us were there when they broke concrete, and so that's a beautiful memory. Definitely is. Mahalo for that. We're going to go through, we have our Olalano'ail of the month. The Olalano'ail this month is number two, a'a ika hula, wa'i ho'ka hila hila ika hale. When one wants to dance the hula, bashfulness should be left at home. Again, a'a ika hula, wa'i ho'ka hila hila ika hale. When one wants to dance the hula, bashfulness should be left at home. We mahalo our kupuna for providing these Olalano'ail for us to remind ourselves of. And again, this voice of bringing our community's culture here present this evening. Mahalo for that. Next up, members, we're going to move to the Honolulu Fire Department. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Kane, Board members, members of the community. I'm firefighter three, Adam Rose, from the Waimea Nalo Fire Station, Engine Twenty-Seven. I'm here to update the Board on the two questions from the previous month meeting. They were, and deliver the monthly statistics as well as the monthly fire safety tip. At the July ninth Neighborhood Board meeting, there was two concerns that were addressed. They were addressed in person with the community members on July eleventh, and both concerns were resolved. And for our monthly statistics for the month of July, we responded to one structure fire, six nuisance fires, five activated alarms. We also responded to forty-nine medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision involving a pedestrian, two motor vehicle collisions with no pedestrian, one ocean rescue, and one hazardous material incident. This month's fire safety tip involves back-to-school fire safety. So educating students on what they can do to stay safe during the school year is an important and often overlooked. College students living away from home should take a few minutes to ensure that they are living in a fire-safe environment. One, don't overload outlets. Keep lamps, light fixtures, and light bulbs away from anything that can burn. Never use an extension cord with large appliances like refrigerators or microwaves. Cook only where it is allowed. Keep the cooking area clean and free of anything that can burn. If a fire starts in a microwave, keep the door closed and unplug the unit. And if a disaster does happen, know who to call. Where to meet is an important part of an emergency planning for you and your family. Pick one main contact locally and one contact out of town who may be easier to reach during a disaster. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Members, any questions for Honolulu Fire Department? Anyone online? Okay, seeing no hands, anyone from the public? We have two public members here with our HFD, so we got to check. Hearing none. Gentlemen, thank you so very much for your service.
Thank you.
Mahalo for your time. Take care, Captain. We're going to move on, guys, to our Honolulu Police Department. Gentlemen, I recognize two, so I'm not sure who's going to be speaking, if both of you will be, but we'll turn it over to you after, Officer Ue.
Good evening, Lieutenant Sanford Yu with District Four. Also in attendance is Sergeant Chairman Dalkin. He is the primary sergeant for your area. I'll present the stats to you for July. In July, there was three motor vehicle thefts compared to two the previous month. Zero burglaries. Twelve regular types of theft compared to seven the previous month. No motor vehicle break-ins compared to two the previous month. And there were two robberies. I'm willing to answer any questions at this time.
Mahalo, Lieutenant. Thank you so very much. Members, any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Seeing none. Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Lieutenant, I do have a question about just, you know, how do we help either educate or navigate the excessive parking, particularly in and around our parks and beaches? You know, there's been a significant amount of increase in vehicular traffic in the park itself at Waimea Nalo Beach Park. We see vehicles driving and parking through there through much of the week, especially on the weekends. What would be HPD's recommendation to addressing that? Is that something that we take up with the Department of Land and Natural Resources? Does more signage need to be there, or do we just ticket people, or what do you think is needing to happen to avoid vehicles entering the beach?
So are they parking on the grass or on the sand?
A little bit of both.
Okay, as far as the camping area, we kind of give them some leeway when they're unloading, but they're not allowed to park on the grass overnight. Nor is anyone allowed to park on the grass in the beach area or on the sand. So if you see that, or if anyone sees that, please call nine-one-one so we can address it. The last thing I think you want to do is put one million signs saying you cannot do this or that. But the people should know there's barriers, there's chains, there's poles. So only really during special events like the Kunu Regatta do they allow parking on the grass, but that's via permit. So by all means, don't hesitate to call and someone will be sent to address that.
Wonderful. Thank you for this. Is Sergeant Dalkin going to speak anything tonight or just participating?
This is his first time via WebEx, but he's here to answer any specific questions to the Waimea Nalo area that I may not have known the answer to. But if you want to ask him something, he's ready, willing, and able.
No, we just want to mahalo you both for making time to come and join us. We are always looking for ways to engage with HPD. I think, you know, there's a lot of opportunity for us to think about our partnership and our relationship here in Waimea Nalo. We've had really great officers that have really helped steward our community over the years, and so as things kind of evolved, I think, you know, it's important for us to think of other ways that we can engage with each other. That's not just an internal meeting like this, but something that we can look forward to with regards to either our community policing team or anyone really that's on shift, I think would be wonderful. So if there's anything that comes up for you folks, I know they do coffee and talk stories. If any of that, you know, if there's a way maybe perhaps to consider a Waimea Nalo venue, please let us know. We'd love to see if we can get someone here to host something like that in Waimea Nalo and get to know some of the people that are serving our community. And for the officers that are serving to get to know our community as well.
I will pass that on to the command. I'm sure she's more than willing to come meet. You just have to find a venue, like you said.
Mahalo. And last, last question, Lieutenant, can you tell us, just to remind us, how big is the district and how many officers are serving?
Let me turn this real down one second. So District Four goes from the area below the top lookout in Makapu, and we go to Crawford's Convalescent Home. That's almost to Sunset Beach. So in that area, which is quite vast, we have an average of seventeen officers on shift at any given time. Sometimes more, unfortunately, sometimes less. But seventeen is the minimum we try to staff the district with, both day shift and night shift.
Would you by any chance have the vacancies available?
Last count, we're at four hundred and thirty-plus vacancies.
Just for our district?
No, total, for total uniformed officers. Our district, we are pretty much staffed. The department fills the district staffing via what they call a P-number. So all of our P-numbers are, majority are filled, but we do have a lot of officers injured. At any given time, officers have a vacation month or training or some are, they call it special assignment to other divisions, which sometimes creates shortages. But we are staffed to the minimum required almost every day, which is seventeen officers.
Wonderful. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you very much. And, you know, of course, there's always best wishes to those that are ailing. So thank you so much for being here, gentlemen. We appreciate your folks' service.
Good night.
Good night. Mahalo. Members, we're going to move on to number three on the vacancies. We do not have quorum this evening to take that item, so we're going to go ahead and defer that, but we are looking for someone to fill the vacancy at Sub-District Nine. This is the Old Homestead and Beach Homes to Makapu'u, and then we have the Hale'alpuni District Eleven that is still a vacant seat currently. So we have eleven of the thirteen seats filled. We welcome anyone that might be living in these districts to come out and join us and work towards some of the things that our community is looking towards. So if there's anyone in Old Homesteads and in Hale'alpuni that might be interested, please feel free to reach out to us, either any member of the Board or the Neighborhood Commission Office. We definitely could use your folks' support. We're going to move on to public agencies reports. We have Board of Water Supplies to start us off, and we'll turn it over to Danny.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Danny, welcome.
Hi. So I have the report for August from the Board of Water Supply. Board of Water Supply is participating in a water access and affordability survey taking place in many communities across the United States. We encourage the public to fill out this questionnaire now through Sunday, September fifteenth. You can find this online at BoardOfWaterSupply.com as well as Satellite City Hall. This input from your survey will assist the Board to implement programs that can better help our vulnerable residents, including our kupuna. All responses are confidential. And it's a short survey, five to ten minutes. And then, you know, I missed last month's one. I'm sorry, I had a scheduling, I missed last month's meeting. Anyway, I wasn't sure, Kimiono, did we get a, should I repeat their responses from the prior meetings, questions?
I think I read the report, Danny, so I think it's good. Yeah.
Okay.
I think I read that.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have this evening. Any questions?
Mahalo, Daniel. Members, any questions for Board of Water Supply? Hearing none. Anyone from the public? Okay, hearing none. Danny, thank you very much for your time and your service. We appreciate your report.
Thank you.
We're going to move on. I know Mayor Rick Blanchardi's report is going to be a little late. Director Sealan is running late this evening, so we're going to move on to community reports. We'll start with the education reports from our Waimea Nalo Elementary and Intermediate School. Do we have Jamie online? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to Heidi at Blanchpole Elementary. Okay, hearing none. Malamahonua Public Charter School. Do we have Denise this evening? Okay, I see you. Where did you go? Denise, are you online or did you get logged off? Okay, I see you. If you can unmute or check on your audio, then we can get your report. Until then, we'll move on. Hui Malama'okekai, anyone from Hui Malama'okekai this evening? And for the record, I see Board Member Ralston at seven nineteen PM. Ted, thank you for joining us. Hearing none from Malamahonua will move on to, excuse me, Hui Malama, Winward Community College. Artist, thank you for being here, Chancellor.
Aloha mai kako. Aloha Chair Kane. Sorry, I'm outside just getting out of my car today, but I wanted to just share a quick update about an innovative project we're doing. And that is with our Mental Health Tech Certificate, which is a basic foundations in mental health knowledge. It's an intro to psych course, intro to psychology, mediation and conflict resolution. And then the third course is variable. It could be abnormal or developmental psych or trauma-informed care, which includes a component about vicarious trauma. And we're employing this certificate with a cohort of police officers from the Honolulu Police District, helping to increase mental health awareness within HPD. And we're also doing a cohort with adult corrections officers across the state through the, through a collaboration with the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. And I just wanted to share this work because we're really proud of it at the college. It's a newer certificate that we partnered with the Hawaii State Hospital to make, and we're attempting to employ it across our communities so that all of those that work with our community and family members have a higher level of mental health knowledge and how to interact appropriately to de-escalate conflict in hard situations because of the different situations we've seen within our state and across the nation. So that's my update for tonight. I'll take any questions, but thank you so much for this time. Oh, and of course, the semester starts in two weeks. It's crazy. It's really great. Our enrollment is doing okay, and I hope we have tons and tons of people from Waimea Nalo, from our community there that are enrolled. Mahalo.
Chancellor, thank you so very much for that update. We really appreciate it. Members, any questions for WCC? Hearing none. Anyone from the public? Hearing none. Chancellor, thank you so much for your service. Mahalo. Did we get Denise figured out?
Aloha.
Aloha mai. Thank you for being here.
Aloha mai. I don't know what happened. I had the wheel of doom going.
The time is yours. Mahalo Nui.
Mahalo. Can I share a screen? Is that going to be okay? Okay.
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, mahalo. Okay, aloha mai kako. We started our school year celebrating laho'e ho'e ea. So our Olalano'ail as we opened the school year was 'ua ma'okeea o ka'i mai ka pono, as we welcomed back and brought back our, our school year. We also celebrated and brought to life the importance of really looking at pono, looking and having our ha'mana jump right in and thinking about what does that mean? What does the word sovereignty mean? How their work that they're doing really is about, and being a part of Native Hawaiian Charter School is bringing about educational sovereignty for our, our community. So just to review, we had a busy summer as well. And we spent time collaborating with Poropu Maia, the top picture, lots of collaborations actually this summer, was our ha'mana planting cooteries up at Nation of Hawaii. They did work all around the island with different schools. And, but this was us doing our work at home, and so they got to plant the next generation of cooteries. They also, we also had two different cohorts travel up to be learning, doing math and STEM education with Kamakau in collaboration with the University of Alaska and really being able to not only delve into math, science, STEM, but also learn a little bit more about a different culture and getting that global perspective on indigenous native Alaska and the different tribes and different foods and their language and their practices. So it was an amazing opportunity for these, for all of these ha'mana this summer. And then we opened our school year. This is our kumu's first day back, of course, starting off at sunrise, spending time learning right on the water's edge, learning a new oli and then being able to think, a new oli that looked at the different place names and places of Waimea Nalo that Porakama taught us. And being able to go out on the canoe and look back on the island and to see these different va'ipana from a, from a perspective from the water as opposed to just being on land. So it was an amazing opportunity for our kumu to really start the year in a grounded way. And then we got to celebrate the first days of the week of the school bath, the year, sorry, the first days of the year, just really building Pilina with our peers and then had an amazing celebration with ultras who came in and donated an amazing number of supplies that we would love to be able to share with the rest of the community because they overblessed our kula. And so I'll be reaching out, and if anybody else on the call has ideas on other organizations that would benefit from school supplies, ultras really wanted to be able to share their aloha with Waimea Nalo. So that's a very quick update, but if you have any questions, again, mahalo Nui for always allowing Malamahonua to share a little bit about what we are doing, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mahalo Nui. Thank you very much. Congratulations on a new year. Here we go.
Mahalo. Here we go.
Here we go. Seeing no questions from the Board. We do have a hand up from Miss Po'isana'o.
Hi, aloha. Can we all hear?
Yes, we can hear.
Mahalo. Aloha Chair. Mahalo Nui, everyone, for showing up. Sana'o Po', and this question is for you, Denise. Is Malamahonua also, is there a curriculum for olelo, or is it just strictly English?
We are English medium, so majority of our work is in English and that we are trying to beef up our olaloo program. We have it in isolation, which is not the best way to learn, but we also want to make sure that we are, we're balancing both. So Ka'apuni has amazing programs, and of course, we partner with Kamakau, but love and embrace and recognize the importance of language. So it's about trying to help us as Malamahonua figure out that balance of English language and olaloha Hawaii.
Okay, mahalo for that. And my next question for you is, are you folks a part of this Napua'ail program that UH hosts? And it's basically a, a summer or a STEM program that they're utilizing with different Ka'apuni across the Ka'apuna. So currently, our seventh grader, she attends Anuenui. As an attendee of Anuenui, she's, she's able to participate in this Napua'ail program. What is it called? Now opio ka'aha.
You know, at Kamakau, I know that Mayor Hila Hila was talking to me about at one point they participated in a program that I think is the one that you're referencing. I believe, and I would turn to my Kamakau expert on the screen, but I, I don't, we don't, we've never had access. And so in all actually, what we're doing is the Alaska program was an opportunity for Kamakau and Malamahonua to learn from what they're doing and then try to replicate something on the Ko'ala'au side. So we are working with, with WCC and artists, and I've actually done the last, oh, artist, maybe five, four, one, two, three.
I think it was five years this year because Chitran was
Five years.
Five years ago.
Oh my.
Okay, so you've had
Yes, so five years ago.
So you've had this cultural exchange program with Alaska for about five years now or with WCC?
No. The cultural exchange program was only, we only were able to do it for the last two years. But we've been working with them to try to create something in Hawaii with Alaska from about five years ago, and that's when we started kind of a week-long program at WCC and then trying to do something even with more marine science for next summer.
Mahalo, Denise. I don't want to take up any more of the Board's time, but if I could, you know, kukaku'aka with you afterwards, or I have your Or I have your email here. Is that OK? I can reach out to you for more information?
Yes, please. Yes, and anybody here would be happy to connect us.
Mahalo again Chair. Aloha.
Mahalo for the conversations. Thank you, folks. Anyone else from the public from alamahu'ua Public Charter School? Uncle? Yep. And then I just want to notate Board Member Lulu Milan at 7:27 PM. Uncle Dee?
I can't tell you how grateful I am to malamahu'ua. I don't know how to quite say it, but been watching my great-granddaughter go through the system up and now in the fourth grade. I've been around a lot of schools and done a lot. And I just couldn't be happier and grateful to see that she's actually growing as a person. And whether it's being taught or not, but it seems like the school is teaching her how to think. And if you don't know how to think, you'll never go anywhere. So I truly appreciate the school. Thank you.
Mahalunuui. Thank you for that. Seeing no other comments raised. Denise, thank you so much for being here. Mahalenui.
Mahalaku.
We're going to move on to Sitar, University of Hawaii College of Tropical Agriculture, Human Resources, Santi Iliman this evening. Hearing none. We're going to go on to Hawaii Job Corps, Ms. Julie here in person. Thank you, Julie.
Good evening, aloha board, community. I'm happy to report that the Job Corps program at a national level just celebrated the 60th anniversary of the program. We opened up here in Hawaii just a year later. So we've been, you know, preparing young people for the workplace for 59 years. But 60th, we celebrated. And we celebrated with a graduation ceremony, both at our Maui campus and at our Waianae Nalo campus. Last week, we invited alumni, former staff, and celebrated with 35 young people getting their high school diploma. So I'd like to thank all of our community partners, including the Chair here for attending and just supporting our program. On that note, you know, we have room in our dormitories for 211 young people. Right now, we're at about 180. So this is the opportunity. If you know any young people that could benefit from getting their high school diploma, learning one of our nine career pathways, Job Corps could be the place. We do tours every Thursday at 9:00 AM. Just give me a call. We want to get you on the list. My number is 808-259-6051. So again, opportunities for young people. But since we operate in campus with over 200 young people, we're in need of staff. So if you're looking for, to work at a place with a purpose close to home, back on Hehe Manu, we currently have openings for residential advisors in our dorms, academic instructors, substitute instructors. You know, we run our own dining facility, so we need some good cooks. And if you know any, if you have any friends or Ohana on Maui, we're looking for some admissions counselors over there. Again, you can contact me directly. My email is in the minutes. And again, 259-6051. Aloha.
Santi Julie, thank you very much for being here. Congratulations. It was a wonderful event. Thank you for having us. Members, any questions for Hawaii Job Corps? And I will say, for those that have not, did not have a chance to attend, there was a beautiful hall of old memorabilia from even before the area was built, the site was built. So it was a wonderful opportunity to go back through time a little bit. So seeing no hands from the board members. Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Great. We're going to move on, gang. We are at 7:34. We have next up the Waianae Nalo Health Center. We'll turn it over to Jasmine.
Aloha.
Aloha Jasmine. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, the time is yours.
Thank you. I wanted to share this. Last week, we were able to celebrate Community Health Center Week. And that's a celebration they hold every year nationally just to bring awareness to health center missions and their impact and a week of celebration. And for the health center, we like to mahalo our patients and our staff and our community and our partners. So just a big mahalo to everybody for your support. Thank you. I also wanted to share about the farmer's market. It's been growing. I don't know how many of you have seen it outside the health center, but the last two weeks, we've moved to the Waianae Nalo Elementary Intermediate School front lawn, which is exciting. We've had at least five or six new vendors join us in the last month. So we just want to continue spreading the word, welcoming everybody to come out if you're able. We have fresh produce and Waianae Nalo farmers that come out, baked goods, food trucks, crafts, and more things. So just want to invite everyone again to that. And then a reminder that we do accept SNAP and EBT for eligible purchases. And mahalo to the school for that collaboration with us. Yes. And then lastly, I wanted to share, sorry. Lastly, I wanted to share about vision services and just a reminder that we offer vision care. And if you have Medicaid, your benefits cover exams and glasses completely. So if anyone needs a vision checkup, you can call our main line at 259-7948. And lastly, we should have some guest speakers over the next couple meetings. I look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Mahalo Jasmine, and we're happy to hear our guest speaker this evening too. So no worry. Jasmine, thank you very much for being here. Members, what are the farmer market?
Thank you, artist.
Yeah.
It's every Wednesday from 2:00 to 5:15.
Mahalo. Anyone else have any questions for Waianae Nalo Health Center? OK, anyone from the public? Great. Jasmine, thank you so very much for being here. We look forward to our continued work together. Thank you. We're going to move on to Waianae Nalo Homestead Association. Do we have any representative here this evening? Hearing none. Moving on, Bellows Air Force Station, Major Chen. We have designated about 15 minutes or so for a short presentation. Major, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so if you folks need another five minutes or so, that's totally fine as well. But we're going to turn it over.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Major Chen with Bellows Air Force Station. Thank you, gang.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Kimiona, thank you again for helping us schedule time to come and talk. To my left, I have Mr. Cash Oliver of PACAF. He's the PACAF Deputy Chief of Staff. And then back in June, we had some questions in regards to parcel six and seven. So he's going to come here tonight and kind of help us talk about that a little bit. So.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Mahalo for allowing me to come in and share a little bit with you. I think one of the questions that came up at the meeting was, why did the Air Force change its position on parcel six and seven declaring it excess? And I think that question came out of the change that's taking place in the Hawaiian Land Use Plan that is taking out the paragraph that concerned parcel six and seven and stated that it was excess. So I just want to take a couple minutes to explain where we're at and the way forward, which we're really excited about. We met in this room with Representative Martin last week or week and a half ago and brainstormed some things. And I'll end with that because I think we have a great way ahead. But to the question, really, at the end of the day, it didn't change. Our approach is a little bit different. And if I could just take a minute to explain the process with excess. For the federal government to declare land excess, that means that it is declared excess first to other agencies within the Department of Defense. If no other agencies, like other services, want the land, then it goes to outside agencies within the federal government. It's a long, drawn-out process. It really all, it started in 2010 with a letter from the wing commander who said he declared parcel six and seven excess. What he was saying was that we really didn't need it at the time and possibly the Marines or another service could take it. Since then, we're doing just a little bit different approach. And that's what I wanted to talk to you about because we're excited about it. And at the end of the day, I think we can team with Waianae Nalo, the kapuna, the elders, and see what we can do. So it is true, the 2024 hump lump is going to take that paragraph out for excess right now. But what we are looking at, and we talked to Rep. Martin on this, is first things first, and that's getting munitions off the property, cleaning it up. And the major here can go into more detail, but I'm happy to report that that's funded for parcels six and seven. And that work is going to start here very shortly. And we're going to push hard to get that done. That's the first step, clean it up. But what Martin and I talked about was, OK, then what can we do after that? What are some ideas? She threw out an idea of a cultural center potentially on parcel six, where the kapuna elders could come in and possibly dual-use that land. So the other one that we talked about was REPI. REPI stands for Readiness Environmental Programming Initiative. And what this is, this can't be used on federal land, but it could be used on the boundary and the border with the park. And it's funds from the federal government that can help. Waianae Nalo has an idea, federal government, the major here crafts a program that goes forward for hopefully some federal funding. That's another avenue. What I'm working on now through our lawyers and through our real estate agents is how can we use parcel six as a dual-use once the munitions is cleaned up? And so just in the infancy stages of this, but we're excited about it. You know, we really, really believe in taking care of the aina. If you've seen what the major's done out here with planting the natives and the sand dunes coming back, taking the iron woods down and just seeing, you know, when you plant bohina hina and ilima and all of those other great plants, how it brings back the dunes. So now that, finally, the last thing I'll say is that doesn't mean declaring that land excess is completely off the table. It is not on the table right now, but down the road, we're leaving that open for a possibility down the road. But in the meantime, we think there's a great opportunity to somehow benefit and use at least a little bit of that land for a cultural center or something that we need to brainstorm with you on. I'll stop there if anybody has any questions.
Mahalenui for that update. Members, any questions for the team here at Bellows? Hearing none. Anyone from the public? Ms. Charlotte, you want to ask that question?
Aloha. Mahalo Chair Kimiona. Charlotte Poi. I am actually Waianae Nalo for Waianae Moku, but I do have Ohana grew up in Waianae Nalo. So I had a quick question. If you mentioned munitions cleanup, mahalo Chair. You mentioned munitions cleanup. Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly for the parcel?
Yes, ma'am.
OK, so my question is, is there a monitoring period that goes into effect after that cleanup is done? Similar to like Lululela in Waianae Nanakuli? I know that's Navy, folks are Air Force, but I'm wondering if there's some similar process. Mahalo.
Sure. Ma'am, I just want to make sure I understand the question correctly. So do you mean like, once they're done and they said an area is clear, we wait a certain amount of time to ensure anybody else, that it's safe for anybody else to go in that area? Is that what you mean, ma'am?
No, I think there's just active monitoring. I think it was before Navy, it's the RED, the RAB process. So I'm trying to just discover if Air Force has a similar process. And I'm sure it depends on the, I guess, complexity of what you have there.
That's exactly it, ma'am. Every situation slightly different. So they will do their best to scan every area possible and then basically remove any anomalies that are found there. Once they clear the area, generally speaking, kind of like what they did out here, the area is clear, the area is clear. And then it should be safe to go back in. But they do provide a report and kind of, you know, talk about that. And we also bring it up in the RAB as well.
OK, mahalo. Mahalo Chair.
Mahalo for the question. Anyone else in the public? OK, hearing none. I do have some, Sanel? So I will go to Sanel Poi and then I'll close this off with some questions.
Mahalo Chair. Sanel Poi again. And this is for not Major Chen, but the other gentleman with you. Thank you for your presentation and whatnot. But I would just like to state for the record that even though one may use olalo Hawaii'i to describe things that are happening within our communities or make reference to the actions taken or the plants that are being planted and utilize olalo Hawaii'i, do not necessarily mean that you're practicing aloha aina or malama aina. I am disappointed that now parcel six and seven has, in your words, been taken off for the time being, as you stated. But we shall see what transpires moving forward. Mahalo Chair.
Thank you very much for your comment. Yeah, I also echo some similar thoughts and sentiments. Major, I think you are very well aware of kind of where I stand on the situations. Clearly, you know, as we think about the future of those parcels, we need to recognize, and I want to make sure that there's some language somewhere that honors this because those parcels were seized against the permissions, if you would, the consent of Native Hawaiian beneficiaries. That land is crown land, and it was seized by presidential order. And so while you sit today, gentlemen, trying to problem-solve what to do with these excess lands, I do want us to make sure we're having some really pretty blunt conversations about how the military, including the Air Force today, has come into those lands. And so clearly, as you might think, this community, I think we're finding tremendous value in getting things repaired, relationships to those particular aina spaces repaired. And so I appreciate the update. I think it's good clarity for our community to hear about what that process looks like. Clearly, as you can imagine, we took it, it took us, I should say, quite by surprise to see that step back from the Air Force. So thank you so much for making time this evening. I hope that we might find the ways to acknowledge how the military came into that land because that erasure is very important for the people of the public to know. This community knows it, and we're not going to let that go. That parcel sits, those entire coastlines sit on crown lands, and those are deserving of Native Hawaiian beneficiaries. And so let's work towards that. I appreciate the representative from our district making an attempt to continue. She's been pushing some of this for us, and so we really appreciate her efforts and work there. I look forward to our future conversations with you folks and with the representative and, most importantly, our community and our beneficiaries to come. So I don't see any other hands here, but I do want a mahalo, gentlemen. Major Chen, is there any other updates from Bellows?
Oh, yes. Actually, I was going to thank Ms. Thielen. I don't know if she dialed in or not, but she reached out and proposed a two-phase plan in regard to the boulders and how we're going to help each other get some out there and then work with the community to make sure we place it appropriately so that we can keep that area safe of four-wheelers. And again, thank you for the police department for helping us out with that as well. So I know you're out there this weekend helping us with something, so thank you.
Awesome. Gentlemen, the time has been well spent. Mahalenui for making time this evening. Thank you for staying on, sir. We appreciate your folks' service, and we look forward to continuing to work with you folks to remedy some of these outstanding concerns and opportunities that behold our community. Mahalo for being here.
Yep, thank you. Mahalo.
And then Major Chen, if there's anything that comes up from this, should they just contact you on this topic?
Yes, sir, please.
OK. Appreciate it. We'll have that available. Thank you. Members, we're going to move on to our Marine Corps Base Hawaii representative, Kristy Kaluiva. Thank you, Kristy, for being here.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, neighborhood.
Good evening, chair. Good evening, neighborhood. Yes, I just wanted to share a few things that happened in the month of July and then some upcoming events in August. As you guys know, I mentioned that we were hosting the Kaua Piko Kanu Ragatta. And we started that ragatta with the first race of the day, opening up and making available to the participants that were here and staying on the Marine Corps Base for RIMPAC. We had seven partner nation. Two of those crews that were from the Marine Corps Base. And then of the others, it was Micronesia, Chile, Mexico, Tonga, Indonesia. And I can't remember the other ones, but wouldn't you know it, the Tongans won. They came in first. It was a good, it was a really good day, went over really well. Everybody enjoys being out there. As a paddler myself, it's the most fair race course in the whole entire state. Other than that, coming up, we are going the cross-country race for high schoolers. There's approximately 900 different high schools that'll participate. So there is a cross-country organization that reached out and wanted to area, and that's happening August 31st. Also, if you folks didn't hear, camping reservations are going to be reopening on August 16th.
Sorry, Kristy, we're having some connection issues.
I'm sorry.
We heard up until August 16th and then nothing after that.
Yeah, I think it doesn't have good connections.
No problem. Can you go back to the camping opening? Okay.
reservations starting on the 16th. Labor Day weekend, that will be open. And I'm sure Laura, if she's on, will probably add that in, but I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware. A noise study, and I wanted to let you know that I inquired about it and there is a study currently going on. The information a comment period for the community, and I will give you guys the heads up prior to that. Oh, Hokulea, another one coming up. So Hokulea is doing their statewide tour, wanting to, again, dock at Mukaku. And they're going to do areas of community events. So for the windward side. So I asked at that one meeting if we were able to make a dock out there that Hokulea could dock out, you know, for future statewide tours for Waimea Nalo. But they'll, they won't obviously come into shore some outreach for the Waimea Nalo community. And yeah, they'll be able to dock and stay there for several days and do community outreach. So we're working with them to the Boko'ola'e section.
Okay. Some of that Hokulea conversation, but mahalo for trying. We look forward to them visiting us in Waimea Nalo. Sure, we can have. Members, any questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? Seeing none. Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Kristy, I just want to make sure, you know, the conversation we just had with Bellows has been one that we've been following and tracking for some time. And this, you know, given the circumstances, I don't know if it's too premature, but has there been any discussion at the Marine Corps Base with regards to interest in these parcels?
I know that if the, that, or any other military installation, that if any installation, it could be Hawaii National Guard, it could be Army, would have the first right of refusal to say, okay, no, we don't, you know, we don't have any use.
Yeah, we're not getting any, any audio from you at this time, Kristy. But I just, if you can hear us, you know, if you can capture that, I think, you know, we definitely want to follow this closely and ensure that we have the right ways and means for a community to voice their desire and their concerns with regards to the future of those parcels as well, with all the different representatives that represent the military armed forces here in Waimea Nalo. So I don't know if you got any of that, but you can call me or text me if you have any questions and we'll go on. Connectivity is a little rough, but enjoy yourself out there. Mahalo for chiming in. Thank you. We're going to move on to Army National Guard. Anyone from Army National Guard? Hearing none. I'm aware that we do have our representative from the mayor's office on. Ms. Laura Thielen, Director, I'm going to take the community concerns, if you don't mind first, since they're sitting here, and then we'll come right up to you, if you don't mind. So
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for making time this evening. We're going to move into resident community concerns and announcements. I know we have Sebastian online and we have Dana. Dana, are you speaking this evening too? Yeah, okay. Okay, great. And then, Uncle, did you guys have community concerns? Yeah, we'll take yours up here first in the, in the public, and then we'll move to Sebastian and we'll go to Dana and then any others. Go ahead, Mr. La.
I raised my hand too. Give me.
Okay, thanks, Ted. We'll note that.
Yeah, the Waimea Nalo, our gym, it's been under repair for, well, since the time it was built. It's still a good gym, but they're going to, it had some leaks in the roof. That was, put the gym out of business for a while. Got it repaired supposedly. This has gone on about three times now, then it was shut down for a year, or I believe a little over a year. That affected so many kids from the basketball programs that used to be outstanding with Henry and I'm getting old. Yeah, I am. When I, all I really want to say is, where is our pride? You know, we got so many good kids here. You know, I had the opportunity to, to coach a lot of them, to, and to be around them. It's, it's not happening anymore. Our kids aren't getting the, the help. I've listened to how many people running for office for the kids. Tell me what's happened in the last five years for our kids? How about the last 10 years? How about to the time the gym was built? Nothing gets done for the, for the kids. That's our future as people. We should be pretty upset. You know, that's, that's, that's our, what we're leaving behind. And we want carried on. We're winners. We've always won in the past, taken a lot of title. And I just would like to see us pay a little more attention to, to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Uncle Dave. Well received. Mahalo Nui for that. We're going to go to Sebastian, followed by Dana.
Thank you very much for allowing to share. I'd like to share screen. It's all right. Is this coming through all right?
It's loading. Yep, you're good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Aloha, everyone. My name's Sebastian Solard. It's my pleasure to share just briefly about the company I work for, Shake Energy Collaborative, a woman-owned public benefits corporation based here in Honolulu. And our mission is to help build renewable energy infrastructure and enable community ownership of that infrastructure. And it's always been very core to any of our work, that community ownership of the projects is important.
Sebastian, your slide disappeared.
Oh. Maybe if I just don't do the presenter mode. How's that?
Still no slide. There we go.
Okay. And the reason why we do our work is because we believe in energy sovereignty, also known as energy democracy or energy justice. And I have a working definition here, but ultimately, it's this belief that energy is a natural resource, it belongs to the people and should be protected from for-profit motivations and should be guided by the needs and aspirations of the community. What Shake does is we try to support communities in realizing energy projects that fit within their energy future vision and aligned with their community values. So here we do co-design and co-development, so we support with facilitation or project management needs. We also support a variety of feasibility studies or technical assistance to explore the technological and economic viability of different ideas, all the way to start to finish creation of that project, whether it's a small off-grid system, all the way to a larger utility scale power plant, community solar farm, for example. This is a quick snapshot diagram that helps illustrate how we operate. We work with a community partner, a community-based org or HUI, that also works to interweave the Manao and leadership of the broader community through a variety of outreach, engagement and co-design strategies and tactics. But it's really a deeply collaborative process across months as we help design projects from scratch, early and often, with community ownership and leadership in mind. Some of our past and current projects include a community solar farm on Molokai, where we work with the Ho'ahu Energy Cooperative, Molokai, as well as a community solar farm in Wa'ana'i and partner Wa'ana'i Sustainability Cooperative. And we helped with a feasibility study of an off-grid farm kitchen microgrid at Ka'ala Farm, also in Wa'ana'i Valley. And so I would just invite folks to learn more about us and our work at shakeenergy.com. But what we're hoping is to help create space and foster conversation about community-led energy projects here in Wa'ana'i or across Ko'ala, Poko, Moku. To be fully transparent, I've been doing this work in Wa'ana'i and Molokai, but I'm from Kaneohe, and so I'm very excited to try bringing energy sovereignty work to the windward side of Oahu. And so if you wouldn't mind taking this quick one-minute survey, I can also put it in the chat. That would really help us better understand if there's any interest in following up. And with that, I don't want to take any more of the board's time, but I really appreciate this time to quickly share. Mahalo, everyone.
Mahalo, Sebastian. Thank you so much. If you have any information that you think would be appropriate for us to post to our social media platform, please send it over to me. I'd be happy to do so. As I stated in our email, I'm hopeful that we can invite you to some other committee conversations where I think we might be able to spend a little bit more time getting to know who you are and what you do. Clearly, you know, this comes at an odd time as we just kind of completed a board meeting, which was very eye-opening for a lot of the community members. And, you know, we're talking about energy, so, you know, it's odd to see you folks here, I won't lie. But I want to see and make sure that you have a space to have the discussions that you're hoping to see from this community and we can engage in that way. So if you can send that over, if you guys have questions, anyone from the public has questions, please reach out to him directly or look forward to a future conversation that we'll invite into our community. So Sebastian, mahalo for making time this evening. Thank you. We're going to go to Dana, and then we'll follow with Mr. Ralston and then Sanelle.
Okay. Mahalo, Chair, Kane, board members and community for making, creating space and time for us. Dana Siassi from Hawaii Public Health Institute, project manager, who's done work here in partnership with Waimea Nalo Health Center, specifically with WIC and with the Diabetes Prevention and Education, Food is Medicine projects, which concluded in May. And we are in the middle of applying for an EPA, Environmental Protection Agency grant, working with Citar, Kikula Nui, Waimea Nalo and others as we are putting things together here. And the others that I refer to are you, the community. It's called a Community Change Grant. There are different tracks. It's 162 pages. We have three minutes. So I'm just going to give the brief overview. The goal of it is to sustain, achieve sustained impacts related to climate resilience, pollution reduction, community health, economic prosperity and community strength. So there's room and space for a lot of things that are a priority to the community and its members. Right now, what we have, based on the projects that we have done and the current work, things like an electronic van for the WIC program in Waimea Nalo to continue the work up the coast in response to the the Puka left by the closure of the Kaneohe office. So they provide, you know, provide mobile services, different, where there's farm-to-ECE, farm-to-school space. My colleague Jess Thompson is on the call as well. I'm going to split the time with her. She is based on Hawaii Island and focuses, focuses on safe routes to school projects, quick build projects. There's also, we have tobacco-free Hawaii, that it's a big part of the work that we do here too. So it's a collection of all the things, you know, that can strengthen and build community from Kiki to Kupuna, community gardens is part of the work as well. So we would like to not just inform, but we're soliciting Manao and suggestions and prioritizing the work. And I will leave my email address, I'll pass it forward through the minutes or however appropriate, and more than willing, super excited. And we really actually need the input to put this in the right direction. And I'll turn it over to Jess now as well, for the last couple of minutes, just to elaborate on her project space that she works in. Mine is Early Childhood Education, Food Access and Equity. So we're moving Ohana, so we encompass everybody under that. So go ahead, Jess.
Mahalo, Dana. Mahalo.
Mahalo Dana, mahalo uh Chair Kane and everyone. Uh, really honored to be here. I am calling in from Papiko, um, just north of Hilo on Hawaii Island. Um, my husband's a nurse over here. Um, and I work statewide. Um, I'm the Safe, Accessible, and Inclusive Mobility Program Manager, which basically means I just take in money uh from anywhere I can get it, and then I give it to communities that want to do um basically safety interventions um around their school, community, parks, or anywhere. Um, it could be uh rapid flashing beacons, like the lights. Um, it can be uh painted pedestrian places. It can be basically anything that you want. You do uh to make your street safer, and the um city and county are 100% on board. They love it because they don't have enough money to do all the things they want to do. So they're like, hey, if you have the money, you give it to the community. They tell you what they want, and you, and then they you will let them hire it out or let them do it themselves, and that's where we can um support you in that. So anyway, it's a lot. I'm really grateful to be here, and I'll stop talking. Thank you.
Mahalo Nui. Thank you so very much, Jess and Dana. We, we, Dana, I know we spoke briefly through email, but I welcome you to um in any of our committees. We can have it properly agendized for future reference as well. Um, tomorrow we have education at 5 o'clock and hearing your interest and your focus. I think that would be relative native Hawaiian, American, native Hawaiian uh resources and natural resources, I should say. Hawaiian Affairs and Natural Resources is also tomorrow. And then we have the Wa'amanalo Community Plan, which is on Thursday. And so we'll extend those invitations to your team to participate. And if there's something more long-term, we can make sure it's agendized in September. Um, but for the general public, we'll post the information that they've provided online on our website, and then it'll be in the minutes as well. If you folks are interested in participating in uh this long term, I think it would be a great opportunity for us to consider. Uh, ladies, mahalo Nui for making time this evening. Dana, was there any closing comments you wanted to make?
No, just mahalo for the space and time. And um, yeah, your input is critical because it's it's the community that, you know, we are. I was a former resident. I was with Napo'ono Na'ohana for 12 years through Partners in Development Foundation. I worked closely with Ilima for years. Um, I go back with my, my family where Oana is there in Wa'amanalo. We're from Kaneohe. But um Wa'amanalo has everything. It's very, it's grown very dear to my heart. Um, so if we can pull this federal money here, um, we should. And, you know, you, you know the best way to utilize the funds. So please, please.
Will do, will do. Mahalo Nui for being here, ladies. Thank you for your work. Mr. Ralston, followed by Sunel, and then followed by Mr. Sakamoto.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Uh, I'll, I'll speak not as a board member, but as just a private citizen here in Wa'amanalo. And especially with our Director Thielen, um, online, I think, to, to listen. A lot of us have had difficulty breaking through the many degrees of separation that exist between the decision-makers in Parks and Rec and the contractors we deal with uh day-to-day basis on uh things like the, the uh pavilion rebuild. And that's what I was talking about here specifically. The several community meetings produced excellent feedback and guidance for how to really do the, the pavilion. I would say to where we are in place and time today and culture, rather than to simply copy what was built 50 or 60 years ago. But there's no way that that is getting any reaction other than silence. Uh, I've talked to uh the Department, Department of Construction as such, and they don't have any authority to listen to us. So if we can figure out how to get through, these penetrate these degrees of separation, layers of separation, and get right to the heart of the matter, who the decision-makers are in, in uh Parks and Rec that can listen to us and, and do something so that we uh A, have a, something that is really appropriate for the area, and B, doesn't have a lot of the residue of the gym written all over it. So um otherwise, we're heading in that direction again. So anyway, just looking for who, who we can contact, just as individuals. Because this is not a board action uh in order to have that conversation.
Mahalo Ted. Thank you so much for sharing that and getting that on record. We will absolutely have an opportunity to talk to our elected officials about that in a minute. So thank you for that. And thank you for putting your efforts there. I know it's been a long drawn-out process, but we appreciate your time. Uh, Sunel, and then Mr. Donald Sakamoto. Go ahead.
Aloha Chair, mahalo again. Uh, Sunel Point, and this is a maybe a three-pronged question. The first one being, we may have discussed this before, but I just wanted clarification once more, please, on the, the rulings of dogs at our beaches and our beach parks. And where exactly is a dog-friendly beach? Uh, we've been seeing more and more families or just individuals with dogs at the beach during times where, you know, it's crowded, right? So that's a, that's definitely a concern amongst our family. The second one would be, there has been an increase, as Uncle Dave was saying earlier, you know, how, how can we help our children? There has been an increase, especially along our streets, of the kids being on their dirt bikes, the, the e-bikes, the ATVs, all hours of the day and night, just ripping and roaring up and down, to also include these motorcycle clubs that are in our communities. You know, these happen at all hours of the day and night, and is very, very distracting and very disrespectful. And then my third um issue, and I, thank you so much Chair for reminding that tomorrow is the education meeting. I will also be on there, but this was directed towards um Representative Martin regarding the EOEL program and how it, what legislation is in place, yeah, requiring the families to have signed tax documents as part of the verification process for registration for preschool. So hopefully, um, that, that was it. That was what I wanted to, to say. Thank you so much Chair and mahalo.
Thanks, Sunel. Uh, I made note of your question, so similar to what happens in this particular part of the agenda is we receive the questions or comments, and then we'll defer them into the appropriate um, the appropriate committee. And that's where some of the follow-up and discussion will take place. So for those of you that are participating, maybe for the first time or such, what happens is we will receive that. It'll go into a committee, one of our four committees. We have the Education, Hawaiian Affairs, and Natural Resources, the Wa'amanalo Community Plan, and then our Parks and Recreation. It'll go into one of those four. So those chairs get an email from me following the meeting. Uh, some of them might take note of it right here in the meeting, but I'll follow up and send those event items to them for follow-up and then answer. So um mahalo for the questions. If, if it doesn't feel like we're listening and answering tonight, that's probably because that's part of our process, uh, to make sure we can flush it out well. And so we invite those that are sharing to those respective committees to participate as well. But so now I make note of your three. I appreciate your time this evening. Mahalo. We're gonna go to Mr. Donald Sakamoto.
Yes, good evening Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir. Good evening. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, I'm the president for Citizens for Fair Americans with Dysphoria, right? I do with bus and handy van for over 14 years now. And I work with the government, Department Transportation Service and a while Transit Service to get better transportation, primarily for paratransit handy van riders. I've been receiving a phone call from a blind individual from Wa'amanalo, who lives there, that uh he gets picked up at 8:00 AM, then they take him to Enchanted Lake, Enchanted Lake for another pickup, and then they go back to his same two blocks away to pick up somebody after 9:00 AM to uh go backtracking, and then they go to town. Uh, it's, it's, it's unreal that they can't tie everybody in when one uh schedule, they have a trapeze system that they use. But it's just frustrating when this person has to go through this ordeal and then have to wait two hours. He had a three o'clock to go back from downtown to Wa'amanalo. And I, he didn't get picked up to 5 o'clock. And this here, there was no van. Uh, I have been talking to the Vice President Handy Van Tracy Koilo uh in the previous past and present. And um, out of 207 van vehicles, they get 70 vans down uh at one day or, or the week. Uh, this is uncalled for. Could, could uh Lawrence Thielen, uh Mayor's Representative, talk to Roger Martin to see how he can improve the service so we don't have to have this inconvenience for uh riders for the paratransit?
Mahalo Nui, Mr. Sakamoto. Thank you very much for raising that awareness for us to consider. If I might invite, if you could email me, I can put my email address in the chat for you. And this goes for any of our other folks that might have concerns that they want to share opportunities. I'm happy to field them there as well, uh, and then provide them to the respects, the respectful agencies for follow-up. Um, I believe the, the Mayor's Rep is on, so we'll follow up at, at that presentation if she might be able to do something about that as well. But we, mahalo you for your service, and thank you for speaking up for our community this evening. Mahalo, Mr. Sakamoto.
Thank you, Chair.
I see no other hands. Are there any other public presentations, community concerns? All right, gang. Mahalo Nui for that wonderful engagement. We appreciate you folks bringing your voice forward. We look forward to some uh collaboration and follow-up. We're gonna go to Director Laura Thielen right now with the office of Mr., uh, our mayor, excuse me, Mayor Rick Blangiardi. Director, the time is yours.
Um, hi. Good evening Chair and everybody else. Um, thank you. So I, there's a lot to cover, given the community comments as well as the responses for last month, so I'll just hop to it. Um, first of all, as part of the Mayor's Report, the city um has been working on coming up with solutions for houseless and has been working closely with the state, um, knowing that medical treatment, both for addiction services and mental health services, and also a lot of the physical problems that people face, is really necessary in order to stabilize people, to get them into housing. So uh, they opened up the first medical respite uh joint project between the state and the city at Leahi Behavioral and Medical um Facility near Diamond Head. And that is taking on roughly 20 shelter spaces. It takes on uh houseless people without health insurance, treating wounds, illnesses, and providing care to provide stabilization. So these 20 spaces, you know, people may be in them for three months, maybe up to six months, and then transitioning out to housing. So that may end up serving about 60 people over the course of the year. This past month, the city's opened up its second medical respite um center. And this is in Ala, um, in North King Street, near Chinatown. And it's gonna have 30 respite beds and an additional 30 kahale. So the respite beds again are gonna stabilize people medically and get them to uh stable enough to be able to go into the short-term kahale, uh, make sure their stabilization is kind of cemented. They get the total wraparound services, and when they're able to, that they would be moved to housing. So again, that total 60 may end up serving uh two sets of people over the course of the year, who may be in there for about six months, and that would be another 120 people. Um, in July, the city announced the opening of Waikiki Vista as an emergency shelter, which is down in um the Waikiki area. And that's gonna be housing quite a number of people. Um, and then they're working on opening up a uh kahale inside of a um warehouse building at Evilay Center, where they can actually build uh, put together kahale units inside the larger warehouse and provide wraparound services for an additional 100, 100 shelter and treatment beds on an interim basis, and then help people get into housing. So the city's goal is to bring uh roughly 1,000 new treatment and housing beds into service over the course of um 2024 uh by the time we get to January of 2025. And so it's well on the way with um these three centers. And then in addition to the one in Evilay that they're opening up, they're working on Wahihua, 24 family spaces to serve 60 to 80 people, depending on the size of the families, and Ha'ula uh family spaces to house 50 to 60 people. So it's really a huge effort, and thank you very much for the partnership with the state, because the state has the resources to make sure that we bring in the medical services and the healthcare services needed for people to be able to stabilize. And the city's been building the um facilities and other things with the federal grant monies and other funds that we're able to have. Um, so following up on last month, um, Major Chen, thank you, and also to HPD for the work that you folks are talking about at Hunananiho. Um, I talked to our staff and to Major Chen about the boulders. And what we realized is that everybody between the community and, you know, HPD and DPR and Bellows had gotten together, and they, they kept meaning to get the boulders out, but they were trying to coordinate so many schedules that a lot of times things just fell through the cracks, because it's hard to get everybody there at one time. So what we've proposed to Bellows is that we take it in two phases. Uh, we can keep communications open to all interested parties, and anybody who, you know, wants to be a part of that could come. But the first phase that we could work with Bellows to take the boulders that they have and come and bring them and stockpile them at a location at Hunananiho. Um, so at that point, we, you know, we'd be just coordinating with them to bring them on over, and that parks would be committed to use those boulders exclusively at Hunananiho, either to stop people from driving into the brush in between the uh park and the military base, or from stopping people onto, um, driving onto the beach. And then once the boulders are stockpiled on parkland, the park department can work with the community members on the placing of the boulders. And obviously, all the partners that are involved would be, you know, in the communication links and welcome to participate. But we thought by looking at it as kind of this two-phase thing, um, and with a little bit fewer critical people to make sure that you coordinate with, um, that we can actually get this completed. Um, Bellows is uh the campsites. We, they had been closed over the summer because of the honu nesting, and they determined that the beach is safe to reopen again for camping. So we are thrilled to offer camping again, starting this Friday um for families. So the online camping reservations are reopened for that campground starting Friday, which is great to have it through the Labor Day weekend. We know a lot of Hawaii families cannot afford to put their keke on a plane and, you know, go someplace and rent a car for vacation. So camping really is it for many of our um families, and it's great to have that, at least for the Labor Day weekend and going forward. And then speaking of camping, um, this summer, we utilized the um last of the FRF COVID funds that we had for the summer fun activities this summer to provide um free summer fun and enrichment programs. But we restarted the team camping program at Ko'oloa Regional Park. And we had our cultural um providers and partners that were there with a series of team um camping events at Ko'oloa Regional Park over the summer. And it was really a phenomenal opportunity, because a lot of these kids hadn't had a chance to go out camping. They came from spots around the island, in addition to the windward side. So we were able to share a lot of culture and history with them, which was great. Um, and then to address some of the community concerns that came up on the Wa'amanalo Gym, um, we, at Parks Department, we share your concern. The construction is handled by the Department of Design and Construction. And we've had a lot of conversations with them over the last um few years because of the history of projects uh taking a long time about putting terms into the contracts with the contractors that require them to complete the projects within a set timetable once the building is closed down to for public access. Um, I think, you know, we also need to make sure that there are damages clauses in that that are enforced. So we're trying to work out, you know, terms and things with them. But I've had a lot of conversations with the director. We have two gymnasiums where they were closed down to repair roof leaks, and the roof continued to leak after the repairs were completed. And so now we're going back in for a second um crack at fixing the roof at, at the gym. We made sure to leave that open so we could have the other building um use summer fun, because the other building, the multipurpose building, is closed for the um hardening of that, for the emergency um response work that's gonna be going on there. So we wanted to make sure we had at least one or the other building was open for summer fun. Um, but we should be moving forward with the gym project. And that, um, I'll, I'll put, make sure we have a question in DDC for next month about what are the terms in this contract for the reopening, once it's closed to the public. Um, we had a question about dog parks. So I have pulled up, we, we do allow um leashed dogs uh in the windward area, Enchanted Lake Community Park, Ha'ia Neighborhood Park, Elepulu Mini Park, uh Kamana Nui Neighborhood Park, Kaneohe Civic Center Neighborhood Park, Kaneohe Community Park, uh Kawai Nui Neighborhood Park, and Pohakapu Mini Park. And then we also have obedience classes in about seven different parks. And this is on the Department of And this is on the Department of Parks and Recreation website. Beaches are under the state jurisdiction, and my understanding is you are allowed to have leashed dogs on the beaches. And so what the park department has historically done is treated, you know, dogs kind of similar to humans in that you can traverse a beach park to get down to the beach. So even if the beach park is closed, because we wanna protect the constitutional right for the public to access the beach, if you're walking through a beach park at night to go down to the beach, or you're walking through a beach park to go down to go fishing at the coastline, the police and the park department tend to not cite people because of that constitutional right. And so I think we take in the same approach, that if you're walking through a park, a beach park with a leashed dog to go down to the beach, you know, that that's allowed, but you're not supposed to hang out at the park. I think the real problem is a lot of people will not put their dogs on a leash. And when we talk to them, they tend to say, oh, my dog's not a problem. And it's like, your dog's not a problem for you. We really need to get people to be more considerate of the others at the parks. Because some people are afraid of dogs, and we know a lot of Kupuna are concerned about being knocked over, which could have really serious consequences for them. So we're gonna look into having some, you know, education materials about getting people to think twice about being considerate of others. And so it's not just about them and their dog, but it's about the other people at the parks. But it's hard, you know, to get people to be considerate if they're pretty adamant about not being considerate. And so we encourage other folks to share stories and talk with folks in general, and maybe just help change that culture. On the handy van vehicles, I will bring the information to Roger Morton, who's the head of DTS, and they run that program. I know he came from that program, and he takes that very much to heart. I do not know why they are having problems, but I do know that the ripple effects from COVID in getting orders of heavy equipment on island has had a huge impact. You may have been reading about the shortage of the garbage trucks, and that city has not received any new garbage trucks, I think, over a four-year period. And we're getting, I think, eleven new ones on island. The Parks Department is also having trouble. We have five rear loader garbage trucks, and three of the five are down with repairs, because they're old. So it's just, you know, trying to get parts on island has been very slow. And it's really frustrating when this happens to these really essential pieces of equipment, because they impact a lot of lives. But I will bring it to Roger Morton's attention, and we can put it on the list of concerns and get an answer for the board afterwards. And then for Ted Rolston on the pavilion, Ted, give me a call. I'll give you my phone number. My office line is 768-3001. And you can reach out to me and we can talk. I have talked with the staff about the comments at the community meeting and, you know, with DDC, but clearly you have some additional concerns. And so just give me a call and let's talk about them. And I think that's everything on my list, so let me know if I forgot anything, and I'd be happy to take any other questions.
Director Thielen, thank you so much. We appreciate you making time this evening. Members, questions for the administration? Sorry, let me get out of this screen. Any members? Okay, seeing none. Anyone from the public? Questions for the administration? Okay, hearing none. Director, you know, I appreciate you going through and already trying to address some of the concerns that were shared from our community this evening. I do wanna review, you know, there's, as you know, quite a lengthy laundry list of things that our parks are needing. And as you know, there are significant needs in and around Waimeanalo, just like any other community. What is the best recommendation on how we should prioritize that advocacy? You know, I think about each park, for example, at Makapuu. You know, there's concern that's been raised by our community members that the restriping of the parking lot would be super helpful, because people are just parking anywhere and everywhere right now. And there's some concern about emergency vehicle access. And is that something that we should just send to you folks, or is a 3-1-1 best for those kinds of things? Clearly, I think every park could benefit from a repaving, but that's not a short-term thing. So something like that at Makapuu has come up. At our smaller beach, Makapuu, Baby Makapuu, if you would, or Kaukou Beach, half of the parking is paved and then gravelled, the other half, all the way up through the ha'ial structure, is just white crushed coral. And so there's a constant, you know, degradation on the crushed coral side. And what we're finding is it's easy for folks to move their crushed coral in order to now jump up over on the curb and then drive down to the beach. And so is that a thing that, you know, we could just... In my head, it's like, okay, just bring in a bobcap, re-layer, re-level everything, and then we're good to go. But how would you want us to prioritize some of these concerns per park?
You know, we recently had a meeting with Okra, the canoe associations. And what they had done is they had put together a list for each canoe halau area, what their priorities were. And that was extremely helpful, because what we were able to do is kind of create this spreadsheet. So we got all the roofing projects in one thing, and all of the other types of projects in another. And what was short-term that we could handle in-house? So DPR has been building up our capacity to do small capital improvements or large repair and maintenance in-house. We've gotten some master agreements, so we've actually reconstructed a lot of parking lots. We're getting into roofing now and redoing roofs, and actually some pretty large roof redoing. Kani'oe Gym, Booth Gym, Central Oahu Regional Park, and some others. So we're expanding what we can do, and we're able to turn these around very fast. Because when they're repairs to an existing building, we do not have to get a building permit. It's not a historic building. And we have categorical exemptions, you know, so it's like, yeah, go fix the gym roof, you know, that's... And if we get to it early enough where it's not a structural thing, we can take care of it. Once you're dealing with structural issues, then it does need to go over to the engineers at the Department of Design and Construction. So if you folks come up with your list, what we can do is we can work with you to identify what are things that are, would require building permits and maybe more complex. So while we can redo parking lots, if you're talking about paving an area that's currently not paved on the beach, not a simple thing, you know, because that's an area where there's potentially a lot of highly sensitive cultural sites. And, you know, we're not gonna go and dig there, and that would have to have a lot of work done for that. Now, we have been able to, at places like One Ula, bring in crushed coral and bring things up to grade, where we're not digging down. And so, you know, we've identified things that we can do. And then we could work with you on that list and say, okay, these things would have to be capital improvement projects. They're gonna take longer, get them into the queue in the budget. These are other things that maybe we can do. And then there's also things that we're identifying that the community can do. Because we've simplified our adoptive park programs, and we're having, you know, welcoming support from a lot of groups that are trying to put small improvements into parks themselves. So we're continuing to work with Holly on the pump track at Waimeanalo. We've been having, I think I'm meeting with her tomorrow night, and we've met with American Ramp Company and some others. So we'd like to be able to support those things in all the different ways that we can. So I think if your committee and your board came up with a list, that's a lot more effective than kind of peppering us meeting after meeting, and then we don't know what the priorities are, and it gets a little confusing.
Sure. Appreciate that. Brenda, can we make a note of that? I know we have information. I think it'd just be best to put it into a format that we can share with the director and her team. Because I agree, Director, it's been kind of, here we have a improvement opportunity here, we have another one, et cetera. So I appreciate that.
And we do have in the queue, just so you're aware, you know, we have the pavilion, and then we have the comfort stations at Waimeanalo Beach Park and the Arts and Crafts Building. Those are in the Department of Design and Construction lineup for improvements. And we've been really pressing them on the comfort stations, because it's a health and safety issue, with you've got the campsites and everything else there. Because those are so old, they're not sure whether the water lines serving them are sufficient. So they're gonna be taking a look at that. And because it's a beach park, they do need to be careful, because it's a sensitive area. So that is not gonna happen as quickly as all of us would like.
Understood. Thank you. I have two more questions to just follow up on. One is the condition of the field at the Waimeanalo District Park. I know we've gone back and forth for some time on that. I know there was some considerable resources poured into having a new team member or a previous team member kind of take some time to think about what would be best for that. Have we come to any learnings yet at this point in time, or are we still in the discovery phases?
No, our former Maintenance Support Services Manager, Peter Yamashita, who sadly retired at the end of last year, had worked over the course of his career at several of the golf courses. So he met with the staff at Waimeanalo, and he said what is very common with the clay soils is when they get dry, they crack. So you have to make sure that they remain damp and watered down to a certain depth. So he taught them on the irrigation, and we exempted Azavito Field from the... We were trying to save water at the request of BWS because of Red Hill. So we exempted them from the water restrictions. He said that it would be better if we could mow weekly, because the grass clippings will then help provide more nitrogen to the field. But because of the distance that this park district has to travel with the wide-area mowers, they can only mow every other week. So we would welcome, if there was a community group that wanted to mow on alternate weeks or even once a month, so we could get it mowed three times a month instead of two, we would welcome that type of adoptive park partnership. So please reach out if there is anybody out there.
Mahalo. I appreciate that. The last thing I had on my, and a lot of this is catch-up, but we had put forth, I believe, a few years ago now, a resolution to rename the beach park campgrounds after Uncle George Mahoy. If there's been any update to that, is that something that you could follow up with, or should we bring that up to Councilmember Kia Aina's office?
You could do both.
Okay.
So, and I think if it comes through the council as a resolution, then we have a record, you know, a better record that won't fall through the cracks.
Understood. I will push that forward to Councilmember's office. I appreciate that. I think the last thing, Director, I did have is, you know, does the Department of Parks and Rec do any kind of acknowledgement, or, you know, we have beautiful wahipapu, wahipana that are throughout Waimeanalo that sit within the field areas or park areas. And I know in some places, they put out some plaques or some, you know, community information, history, historical information on certain cultural sites. Is that something that is an active program in the Parks Department, or is that falling there perhaps a different kind of division within the administration in relationship to city parks?
Right. So MOKA, the Mayor's Office on Culture and the Arts, tends to take the lead on that. And they actually are the ones that provide the care for the statues and the plaques that are in the parks. And so a lot of times, people may come through them, they may come through us, and then we work with MOKA, you know, and have them go over there. When people are doing murals, we will take the lead on that. But we do have them take their proposed mural to the MOKA Board or Commission for input. And then it comes in as a gift to the city, so it also goes in front of the council, as well as the neighborhood boards. So because these are public spaces, it's just good to make sure everybody is aware of these things. And that's usually the process it goes. But if there's people that want to do something in particular for any of the parks in Waimeanalo, we'd probably connect you with MOKA and then work with you through there.
Yeah, I guess I'm just more curious if the department has any kuliana to that. Right now, it sounds like it's the community that would have to raise that to you as a parks. But does the department itself, being, if you would, the managers of these spaces, have any kuliana through the administration to honor and preserve cultural sites that are there in any way, shape, or form?
I think we do, but I also think it's not... You know, I don't know that there's established policies or procedures within the department about that. And so I know staff tend to work with people on a local basis. So we have a ha'ial at Pokai Bay. But a lot of times, the more significant sites tend to be under the state parks kuliana and not so much the city parks. So honestly, I think a lot of the park staff are more used to working in, say, like a Kailua District Park or, you know, Kani'oe District Park, and may not have that same connection, you know, to something that may be there. So it's an area that we could definitely improve upon.
Understood. I appreciate that. Last question, I promise. Does the department have statistics on camping permits approved? There seems to be an overflow of camping at some of our parks, and it could have been because Bellows was closed. But is there a way for the public, the general public, like myself or anyone else, to check in and see how many camping permits are actually provided and approved? Because, you know, we're running into quite a bit of overflow at the Waimeanalo campgrounds. And it's becoming problematic, as vehicles are now entering the campgrounds in multiple areas, despite the wonderful work that the department has been trying to do to keep trucks and vehicles from accessing. And it's become, you know, one community, one camper said that they parked their stuff next to their tent because they don't trust, right? It's unsafe for them. They're fearful that their car's gonna get broken into. And so, you know, there's some rules that are being bent, I think, by some in regards to camping. And I'm just trying to figure out if there's something worth us following up on, you know, or if there's something within the department that has some ability to follow up on some of the camping that is being witnessed right now at the community level.
Yeah, camping is interesting, and maybe we can have a longer conversation about that at a board meeting. But it's, you know, we only have so many camp permits per site, based on the... Yeah, we have one camping specialist, and he'll go out. So we, you know, we added a couple handicap campsites at Kayaka Bay. And so he went out and he, you know, measured out the areas and figured out what could fit and things like that. But that's the number of permits that you can get online. And for a regular campsite, there is a limit of ten people per site, and we do have group camping. But the reality is, a lot of people wanna camp. And so they will be out, you know, bigger families than ten will be at a campsite. And then I was out at the Leeward Coast several times this summer, and there's a lot of people that are doing self-help camping, often outside of a campground. You know, they've just brought everything down with them. And you could tell, it's a family down there. It looks different from an encampment. Yeah, so I think part of the solution is we need more campgrounds. Because we need to make it an opportunity available to more people, because it's so expensive to have any other type of vacation here. So, yeah, we need to find areas that we can expand, so that you can get a little more breathing room at the campsites. And, yeah, I agree with you. I don't understand why people want to come camping and then have, you know, their truck parked right next to their tent. But it is something a lot of people do.
Understood. Director, I appreciate your time. Mahalenui for the exchange there. I look forward to providing some insight from our community to the department and to the administration in regards to some of the priorities that we're seeing in and around our parks and recreation. So mahalo for your service. Thank you.
Members, mahalenui for your time. It's about 8:50. We're gonna move on now to our elected officials' report, starting with Councilmember Kia Aina. And I just wanna make a statement to all our elected officials. Congratulations on those that have won their races. And super appreciative of the candidates that put their names into the races. I think that's really important and really healthy. So I wanna mahalo both for those that have ran campaigns. We look forward to continuing to work towards benefits that help the community at large. So mahalo to all of you folks. Irene, the time is yours, my dear.
Thank you, Chair Kani. Thank you, Chair Kani. Aloha, everyone. My name is Irene, and I work for Councilmember Kia Aina. She is unable to be here tonight. She is chairing a hearing this evening. So resolution naming the new Waimeanalo District Park multipurpose building after Grace Aviento was adopted at the full city council meeting on August 7, 2024. Councilmember Kia Aina would like to mahalo the Waimeanalo neighborhood. Councilmember Kia Aina would like to mahalo the Waimeanalo Neighborhood Board and to the community for providing testimony in support of anti-gracy. The Department of Planning and Permitting will be holding an in-person and by remote public hearing on the special management area use permit for the Waimeanalo Beach Park improvements on Thursday, September 5, 2024, at 9:30 a.m. Bill 44, 2024, introduced by Councilmember Kia Aina and co-sponsored by Councilmember Dos Santos Cam. This bill lowers the maximum speed on roadways around public parks and public school grounds from 25 to 20 miles per hour. The bill passed first reading at the full City Council meeting on Wednesday, August 7, 2024. And it's anticipated to be heard at the Transportation Committee meeting on Tuesday, August 20, 2024, at 2:30 p.m. The Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and the State of Hawaii will be holding an intergovernmental renewable energy task force meeting on August 22, that's Thursday, at 9:30 a.m. to 3 p.m. at Mission Memorial Auditorium or virtually over Zoom. Councilmember Kia Aina would like to mahalo Chair Kani and the Waimeanalo Neighborhood Board for hosting the July 31 community meeting. The resolution which proposes Hawaiian homelands development in Kailua will be having its final committee hearing at the Planning and Economy Committee meeting Thursday, August 22, at 9 a.m. And Bill 64, 2023, amending the land use ordinance. The Committee on Planning and the Economy will begin to consider proposed amendments regarding agricultural use in Bill 64 at its committee meeting on Thursday, August 22, at 9 a.m. And that concludes my report. I'm going to insert the information in the chat box below shortly. So thank you.
Irene, mahalo Nui for being here. And I do want to mahalo the council member. I know that the hearing she's holding this evening is of significant consideration and concern to the community in which they're serving right now. So I appreciate her sending you to our community while she handles that on behalf of that community. So thank you for that. Members, any questions for Councilmember Kia Aina? Okay, seeing none. Anyone from the community? Mr. Sakamoto, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Donald Sakamoto with County Neighborhood Board 30. I attended the 31st minute you had. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Jessica Aina, for having the forum. It was very educational, especially for somebody on the County Neighborhood Board and myself at large. Regarding the presentation slideshow, I'm a legally blind person. So I'm trying to get a hold of council members via phone to see if they can get a alternative format, reasonable combination for blind, instead of PowerPoint, to convert it to text so I can understand what was presented at the meeting. And then also recording the video, was there video recording it? And if I can get a video for myself and my other board members for the board 30 would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donald?
I will check.
Oh, sorry, Irene. I just, that was regarding the Boam, the Boam Town Hall, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Irene, you got that noted?
Oh, yes. I will check with Councilmember Kia Aina and I will get back to you shortly, Donald Sakamoto. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Mahalo. Irene, I have two other, sorry, Donald, your hand is up again. You have something to follow up. Okay. Irene, I have two items if we could follow up. As I mentioned to the director, we have the resolution that we put out of the Neighborhood Board some time ago regarding the renaming of the campgrounds after Mr. George Mahoy. If we could follow up on that status or if we're, if, I know there was some transition between that time and where we are right now with regards to some of our board members. So if it's on us and we just haven't submitted it for whatever reason, if we could figure out where that is, that would be great, a status there. And then if there's a status report on the speed calming measures on Hehe Manu, I know this has gone kind of back and forth and it's been hot potatoed to different agencies. But a council member kind of took the lead on that recently. And so if we could follow up on that and if we could get a report back on where that is, that would be very helpful for us as well.
Okay, will do. Thank you, Chair Kani.
Wonderful. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your service and we look forward to your continued work in our community. Mahalo, Irene. We're going to move on, members, to Senator Chris Lee.
Hey, good evening.
Chris Lee, yeah, thanks. Thanks, Senator. Thanks for being here. The time is yours.
Thanks. I had a couple of things to chat about. I want to follow up on a couple of things from the conversation thus far this evening. While I think Director Thielen addressed some of the camping issues. You know, on the state side, we've been working with DLNR and state parks elsewhere in the island to increase capacity for camping spots. There's nothing that I'm aware of anyway immediately in the Waimeanalo area that would add to that. But there is something else that we've been hearing about for some years. And that was access to various recreational fields for, in particular, you know, sports and that kind of thing, especially when you have ASO or other leagues and things like that that can tend to monopolize areas. So getting a lot more of that has been something we've been working on. One of the, you know, big appropriations that I put in the budget this year, working with our colleagues, was for $21 million to acquire the HPU, former HPU campus, kind of by the bottom of the Poli. It's about 140 acres. And the current plan, assuming that deal goes through, which is in the works right now, would be to put most of that into, or keep most of that in conservation, do a lot of native habitat restoration and so forth. But the fields that are there, there's a kind of open football soccer field area. There's probably the absolute most gorgeous softball, baseball field anywhere in the state that's there. And then there's a handful of tennis courts and basketball courts and that sort of thing, which are kind of overgrown, need to be completely redone. But the plan is to make that all available to the public. And so that would be hopefully a bit of a relief on pressure and fields kind of throughout the Windward side because it just adds a lot more capacity. So that might hopefully give a little more breathing room on the Waimeanalo and Kailua side fields. So I'll update later on. We're in negotiations for the final acquisition right now. But as we, as we move ahead, we'll come back on that. Secondly, want to really just send a shout out to Councilmember Kia Aina's office and Irene and your team. You know, it was only this session, one of the bills that we passed that I had put in, basically passed the counties the power to reduce speed limits within one mile of a school zone. And to see you guys move so quickly to take advantage of that and, you know, do what the community's been asking for to help save lives and all of that is just remarkable. You really don't see that kind of cooperation and just, you know, drive to get something done very often. But, you know, that was within really just a couple of months. So it was just super impressive. Really want to congratulate you guys on that. And then secondly, I can't remember, because I logged in just as, I think the presentation was ending. But talking about safe routes to school and some of those other fixes on some of the other streets. You know, one of the bills that the fund we created a year and a half ago now, put $20 million into a fund specifically for safe routes to schools. The way that we changed it, I basically rewrote the qualifications. And in the past, and in Kailua in particular, we had several safe routes to schools projects that because of the complexity of the application process and having to go do traffic studies and all these other hoops you got to jump through, basically ended up killing the projects time and time again. And so we essentially simplified it and made it really easy for the community or for a school or for the city or whomever else to come apply for money. And that working group, that advisory group, that there's like a council that decide, that kind of vets all the projects that are submitted and sends them out, is meeting now and is getting going. So I would really encourage folks, and this may have been the subject of the presentation. I may be repeating things, but really start to get on the ball because it's going to be a competitive, time-based process. And we're going to certainly try and, you know, make more funds available because this was to replace a lot of the federal funds that were lost. But there's obviously a lot of need around the state. And so there's definitely not enough money to go around to address every community. So the sooner that there's a plan or some sort of project identified to address some of the safe routes to schools needs, you know, any of our schools, the better off we'll be. And then lastly, there are a couple of things on the environmental front. You know, one of the bills that introduced this year that got passed into law banned undersea mining in Hawaii waters. And I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but basically there's a lot of companies out there looking to mine heavy metals and things from the bottom of the Pacific. A lot of it's, you know, pretty far from Hawaii, out in the southwestern direction from Hawaii. But the impacts can be, well, first of all, they're unknown. And they can have impacts on, you know, fishing and entire ecosystems and all of that. And obviously, we're right next door. So what came out of that, I've done a little bit of back and forth with some of the media who were talking with some of the companies that are looking, and these are all mostly foreign companies looking to take advantage and essentially in their process kind of strip mine the metals off the ocean floor. They're basically saying like, well, there's nothing you guys can do, so we're just going to do it. And so what we reminded them was that there was a bill last year that barred Hawaii ports from being used by ships, whether, you know, from here or really any other country to access our ports to refuel or restock or take a break or deliver commodities or whatever it is, if they're doing that kind of unpermitted undersea mining. And so we are working now with several other states and with some of our colleagues to get California, Oregon, Washington, et cetera, and some of our other territories to adopt the same thing so that we can collectively ensure that we use the best data and science to come up with impacts and understand what's happening before we have everybody and their brother rush headlong into trying to take advantage and exploit the natural resources that surround us. And once that happens, of course, you know, there's no going back. Those ecosystems take thousands, tens of thousands, literally millions of years to recover. So we have one shot at doing this right and making sure people are responsible and we are cautious about how we do this. So that effort continues, which takes me to my last thing I wanted to mention, which was, you know, I was really fortunate. This past year, I was elected by some of our colleagues around the country, our state, other state legislators, to chair an organization called the National Caucus of Environmental Legislators. It's about 1,400 Democrats and Republicans, state legislators from all 50 states. And the goal of the organization is to focus on environmental conservation and protection and all the different things that, you know, come with that. And I bring this up because, you know, there's a Supreme Court decision at the federal level just about a month ago that basically undermined federal agencies' ability to use science and data to basically protect things like freshwater resources or clean air and a whole host of other things. And the impacts aren't felt yet, but there's a whole lot of cases moving through the federal courts that are going to undermine some of those protections that, you know, we've relied on for forever and in some cases have taken for granted. So we are right now working with a number of folks in other states to identify where are all the key places now where there are probably not going to be the same level of protections, the same level of laws and regulations that we rely on to keep our environment, air, water, all of that clean. And we're going to be working, hopefully, to identify that so we can put those protections in at the state level this coming year, not just here in Hawaii, but, you know, for all our colleagues that are doing the same in their states as well. Because we have a lot that's on the line and we don't know what the full extent of the impact is going to be. So I bring this up because we're going to be needing to work together collectively with our counties, our state, et cetera, to figure out who has the authority to do what. And obviously, in Hawaii, we've been through a lot with water lately, both on Oahu and the neighbor islands. And we have, you know, a lot of situations where we have power plants and other things that are putting stuff into the air that, you know, could be directly impacted, which can impact the communities that they're in. And in a lot of places, you have, you know, clear science and clear data showing in those communities that have some of those things there already, even with the current level of protections with the Clean Air Act and things. You have, you know, mortality rates that are higher, you have birth defects that are higher. You have all the litany of all kinds of things, just to say nothing of just, you know, impacted quality of life. So there's a lot that's going on this year. There's a lot we're going to be working on. I just want to put that on everyone's radar as we go into this coming year. And other than that, happy to answer questions.
Senator, thank you very much for your time this evening and your report. Members, any questions for the Senator? Seeing none. Anyone from the public? Mr. Sakamoto, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Senator Lee. Two questions. I believe sometime this year, there was a forum at the Blaisdell from the FDA and yourself with other transportation people. And the subject was brought up about our public transportation buses and paratransit using chemicals in COVID to clean and disinfect. It might have some reflecting, some health issues with the operators and maybe some of the passengers during that time. Can you elaborate what happened on that? And then there's a Senate Bill SB 2350, which is noise pollution and was introduced, I think, in the House or Senate. And I just wanted to, what is that bill about? And can it be utilized around the island or only specific areas for noise pollution for vehicles?
You know, to the, to the first part of your question about the forum, I was at the first half of that and then I had to go because we basically were going out to communities with some of those transportation folks to identify key places where we need to make fixes and stuff. So I wasn't there for, I think, the question in particular about the chemicals. But we can find out, you know, the handy van and bus system is operated by the county. But we have a great working relationship with DTS and our partners over there and so forth. So we can, we can work with the council member and the mayor's office to, and our state agencies to find out what's happening there. The second part of the question about SB 2350, which I just pulled up, yeah, I remember this. This was, this came through my committee in the transportation. We basically amended it a little bit, but basically in the end, it creates a new set of penalties and prohibitions for driving cars that have super noisy, you know, mufflers and blaring music and all that kind of stuff. So essentially gives law enforcement a lot more tools to be able to manage that situation. Because that's along with, you know, feral chickens and a few other things, one of the things that we often get a lot of complaints about. And some of our colleagues get complaints about, particularly in the urban core. So that is now law. And I'm sure usually about a year after, we do a check with our prosecutors and with the judiciary to find out how much that law has been used and those penalties have been implemented. So it's a little early yet since it just became law. But I think in a few months or maybe at the end of the year, we can do a check back and see what's actually come of it.
Is it a pilot program or a permanent program?
No, it's actually a permanent change. Because it's basically amending the penalties for motor vehicles. It creates an escalated schedule of fines. So essentially, you break the law once, you know, it's $100. Second time, it's $300. You do it a third time, it's $900, depending on the fine. Similarly, for just mufflers, the first violation is $200, second one is 500, third one is 1,500. So it's supposed to create a meaningful deterrent for the repeat offenders. Because it's really, and I say this as a car guy, I used to build and race cars way back in the day. So I'm very familiar with what's happening there. It's a handful of the same repeat offenders that typically are causing everybody problems as it is with, you know, most crime. So the penalties are designed to target those folks who are willing to knowingly flout the law and continue to break it.
Okay, appreciate the update on that. Thank you.
Mahalo.
No problem.
Seeing no other hands, Senator, I just have one ask. I have a list of things that I'd like to go over with our state representatives, but just one specifically for you because you were the only one present during that time. We've had some back and forth conversations about the Waimeanalo Community Plan. It's still not a recognized plan and I want to figure out what our next step is. So what do you need from us as a neighborhood board or as a community in order to progress to the next set? Whether it's officializing that draft or having another meeting to review it and make some edits? What is needed from us to push that? Because I think, you know, the way that some of that plan was created was really to provide plan was created was really to provide lawmakers and folks that are doing work in our community with something to look at in addition to all the other plans that are out there. And right now it's being ignored. And so I'm not okay with that and I want to figure out what we need to do.
Yeah, that was, I believe, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars a number of years ago. I think Senator Thielen, well, then Senator Thielen at the time had really helped push that through. I remember checking, you know, the last time we talked about this, the money had been released to Bishop Museum, who had somebody, I forgot off the top of my head who it was, but somebody who was supposed to be leading that effort. So let me follow up on that again. Actually just met with them, with Bishop Museum about snails and some other endangered species stuff. So I can follow up there. And also, you know, the other thing I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, for a lot of these laws and things, you know, this stuff isn't done alone and I really want to credit Rep. Martin too, because she has been such a huge advocate for so much of this stuff, you know, across the board from the environment to safety and transportation and, you know, all the stuff we're talking about. So I'll also follow up. I see her name at least in the chat. So I'll work with her also as we answer the question about the community plan and check in on some of the other things.
Wonderful. Appreciate it. Thank you, Senator, for being here. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
We're going to move on. Representative Martin, thank you so much for being here, ma'am. The time is yours.
Mahalo and good evening. So I wanted to share a little bit of information and if it's of interest to anybody and they want more detail, just email my office. I just put in my email address there, but I just wanted to share some things that are going on that may be useful. So one of them, the first one I just posted is a gun buyback. These have been very popular. It's a way to make us all safer by getting unwanted guns disposed of safely. And there is gift cards and no questions asked, so it's an easy way to do it. And, you know, we hope that it just makes everybody safer because the guns will not fall into the wrong hands and maybe be responsible for an accidental death or something. I also did just put in the chat, there is expanded options for preschool for three and four-year-olds. And this is, this is very expensive, but it's really important. And we made it a priority, so I really want people to take advantage of it. One way is through our public DOE schools. So now we have a newly renovated preschool room for English as well as a newly renovated preschool room for Olelo Hawaii at Blanche Pope. We also have an English language one at Waimanalo Elementary. And I put in the link to apply. There are income preferences at the beginning of the school year, right? There's preference given to families that meet a certain income, meaning below a certain income threshold. But once the year progresses, it opens up to anybody. Another separate program is preschool open doors and that is subsidies for private preschools where our parents pay. And that is definitely income-based, but we put a lot more money, the state has put a lot more money into that program. So people that previously did not qualify might qualify now. So please, this link is there. So just, and also it's now expanded to three-year-olds before it was four-year-olds only. So we want to get more kids into childcare, which frees up the parents their own time and also has been shown to be really useful to prepare kids for success in school later. Other things I just wanted to report out on. We, meaning our Senate team, was very instrumental in getting funding for Kailea High School athletic facility improvements, which is very, very much needed. And so a couple of things that were already previously funded and now are contracted and in the works are temporary external wiring for the existing football field light poles, which have already been made safer, you know, they were welded to make them safer, but they don't work. So this is external wiring and that is going to be done next month with the hope that it can be used for practices, et cetera, this school year. That will also repair the scoreboard, which isn't working. And the permanent new light poles, which again are already contracted and funded, those will go in by the start of the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. Also already funded and planned is repainting the school, which is desperately needed. And repair of the existing bleachers, which have had that, you know, caution tape on for a long time. So now these are not new bleachers, it's just making the existing ones safe. And then separately, with the ten point five million that the ledge funded this year, the plans we met to figure out how to best use that funding along with the high school staff. And so there will be a study of the drainage problem at the football field, which is a first step before anything else can be done there. And then based on that study, there will be designs for the new football field and track. And that will give us an idea of what the budget is that's needed for that, which we don't know now. Thirdly, there is the funding to actually execute upgrades for the baseball field, likely a turf field. And then lastly, a comparable upgrade to the girls' softball field because we need to meet Title IX requirements. In the past, nothing was done for the baseball field, even though there are craters in the field that my entire foot fits in easily. Because it would have been a Title IX violation. We were funding more boys' things and not girls' things. So all of that is in the works. Every project takes a very long time. So this will be useful for kids that are not yet in high school. Probably some of the projects, you know, the new football field is probably years away, but at least there's no time like now to get it started. Another thing I wanted to mention is that my office and I went door to door along Kalani and Ole Highway for the section from McDonald's to seven eleven on the Malka side, where there is the large DOT setback. And that that, sorry, I got a text that distracted me at this moment. So that setback there, the DOT has agreed to plant trees. And Senator Lee have, may have found some nice funding for that as well from the federal side. And I've gone door to door and a lot of neighbors are not interested, but many neighbors are interested as well. And that's fine. It's not a mandatory thing at all. It's only if people want a tree in front of their house. And the three species that we had discussed making available are milo, which is a large tree, ko, which is medium, and lulu, which is a smaller tree. And having some combination of those. There are about nineteen houses that I was not able to make contact with the neighbors, even though I went by a couple times, a couple different times. I'm guessing that many of those houses are not interested because they didn't respond to the flyers that we left. But in case people know people along that stretch and they just don't, you know, are not focused on flyers left on their gate. I just want to make sure people know about this opportunity. Those trees obviously would provide beauty, shade for the walkway, absorb stormwater, clean our air, you know, so a lot of things. So please spread the word about that. There, there is nothing being forced, no parking is being taken away. It's just about improvements for our community. And with that, I am open to any questions.
Members, any questions for the representative? Seeing none, we have members of the public, Sunel.
Hello, Chair. Mahalo again. Good evening, Representative Martin. Sunelpoy. My question, thank you for bringing up, is regarding that EOEL over at Kula Kaya Puni on Waimanalo. So last year I had a three-year-old who is now four, but she was enrolled in the Kula Kaya Puni site, so the pre-K classroom. However, for this year, she would have been returning to the four-year-old classroom, but was told that, or I guess there was new registration paperwork that was needed. So right now she's not registered. So what this EOEL program, as I'm understanding it, what is the it is no longer a first come, first served, as I, as I'm understanding this, it has to be income-based. So she's a returning student, but is no longer registered because they are now giving preference to the income according to the income guidelines?
Yeah, so that is interesting that you bring that up. That is accurate. So previously, that classroom was funded by Kamia Mia Schools. Kamia Mia Schools provided funding for the teacher, not for an upgrade to the classroom, but for the teacher there or teachers as a, just to get it started. But now it has been taken over by EOEL to keep that classroom open permanently as a resource. And what you're saying, I believe you, you are more involved than I am. I do know that EOEL has income requirements. They do open it up to everybody once they have given initial preference to lower-income families. But from what you are saying, maybe Kamia Mia Schools did not require that. Are you aware, is it oversubscribed? Is there no space for your?
As I understand it right now, in the four-year-old class, there are still spots available. And I was told by her kumu that her spot would be held, you know, and of course, yes, there are other children besides my child. However, my concern was, one, she wasn't re-registered, right? She wouldn't have just been rolled over to the next year, to this year. Two, the income requirement is that of tax sign, signed tax returns. So as I understand, in other state-funded programs such as Head Start or preschool open doors, signed tax returns are not the required documentation for income verification. However, I was told by someone in the EOEL office that they require tax returns because it is a state-funded program and they are answer, the answer to the legislature as far as where the funding or the income, the family, lower-income families come from. I'm sorry, I hope that you understand where I'm getting at, but my concern was.
So is your suggestion that people that don't pay taxes and don't file taxes, therefore don't have the appropriate documents or what?
Not that at all. It's that these other state-funded programs, they require income verification such as pay stubs. But EOEL, Executive Office of Arduarini, is the first state-funded program that I've heard of that require tax returns.
Okay, can you, I can go and ask about this and follow up. Can you clarify why that's problematic? Why pay stubs are preferable to a tax return?
Why would, well, my question is, why would you require a tax return when this is? One, it's not, I understand from a financial aid for private school. You know, it's different, but every other state program that I've come across or have been a part of in the past, any type of income verification, pay stubs were sufficient. It might be a personal preference that I don't want to be giving all that extra information to the government. And that's a personal preference. But I guess my main concern is, why would my child not have been just rolled over?
Yeah, I have no idea, but I can ask about that. I do think that it will be, but just to be clear, because I actually care about your child as well as other children, you're saying there is a spot available for her, but they are not enrolling her yet because they're waiting for income verification. Is that correct?
Well, they're waiting to fill it up with everyone else that might meet the three hundred percent income poverty income level or whatever that means. But tax returns are what they require to verify.
Okay.
So honestly, I don't want to give that information because that's a little too personal for me.
Okay, okay. Well, I will ask them, you know, some, yeah, I can, I can get information for you. Would it be possible for you to email my office that we have a way to get back to you?
Yes, I will do that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah. So I pasted that in the chat. If you email that, then I'll have contact information for you. I do think it's an unusual situation about not rolling over because now anyone who starts as a three-year-old will have already provided that income information, you know what I mean? So this is a little bit unique that your child is falling into this window of going from a three-year-old to a four-year-old in a, in a unique time. So I don't think this will, it hasn't been a problem in past years and I don't think it will be a problem in future years. But I wonder if it's a problem for anyone besides your child this year? Or if it's only you that got caught in this, you know, in this bind? So anyways, I can ask them and maybe ask if there have, if there's other children that this applies to that are already part of the program and now are being asked to meet new income requirements that maybe they're not comfortable providing documentation for. Or maybe they don't qualify, you know. So yes, I can find out what can be done and, and yeah, how frustrating. I understand if you are already part of that program, you would expect to continue.
Mahalo. Thank you guys for that exchange. I think that was great. So now if you need any information for the representative's office, please let us know. And, you know, I'd like to also reach out to, I think we can take a look at it through our education committee and see what we might learn there as well. So mahalo for that.
Mahalo, Nui Chair. Thank you again. Good night all.
Mahalo. Ms. Charlotte, you have a quick question? We still have one more. Go.
Yeah, just a quick question and comment. So two things, I can totally understand the need to validate and justify funding that you receive. But I also don't like the optics this gives that only are that you have to be poor to be able to attend Kaya Puni, right? That is totally not the, the message we want to send out there. We want it to be an engaging and a welcoming space for all of our Lahu'i. So I just wanted to say that really quickly, you know, yes, that's my Ohana. Last year I spent half the year in Waimanalo with them. So this girl, I took her to Kula every day, right? She loves Kula and that is the environment that, that one, that kumu in Kula fostered in her and the Ohana support. And we'd like to see that continue, not only for our Kiki, right? But for others who might see this as uncomfortable because now they get singled out, usually it's the other way, right? But they get singled out and then sometimes that accessibility is further away. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm going to pay attention as well. So I will be attending more of your meetings, Yehalawai too. So mahalo, Rep. Martin, and mahalo, Chair.
Mahalo, Nui. Thank you for that comment. Thank you. Rep., I just have three follow-up items if we might be able to. This year, we, we really want to take a look at the EA.
Can I, can I just, I'm sorry, Chair, can I just clarify? There is no income requirement for Kaya Puni from kindergarten upwards? For all children, regardless of it's English language or Kaya Puni, there are income requirements or preference just for the preschoolers. And that hopefully is temporary as we expand preschool. The idea is to have universal preschool for three and four-year-olds in our state so that everybody has access to free, excuse me, it's late at night, to free preschool. But during the rollout, when we don't have enough to go around, it's just during this period that for preschool only, there is an income preference. And that's only at the beginning of the school year to allow those families to sign up first.
Mahalo for the clarification. It seems like we still have work to do there. So I look forward for our learning to, to be able to serve our community in that way. Thank you for clarifying. Just three quick notes if we might, we're going to start working on strengthening the EA and EIS process. I think we want to take a look at what that currently looks like. There seems to be some gaps in that process and how it has maybe underserved certain areas of community concern in the past. So if there's any recommendations you or Senator Lee might have, or even Councilmember Kaina, I think we want to start to really kind of draw out something that might help us either work on some of the language or work on some of the expectations. So just something in your, in your ear this evening. And then we met with, I've been having some challenges trying to connect with someone from Makai Research Pier. I was recently connected with Director Michael Shibata from the Office of Strategic Development and Partnership. I had a nice conversation with him on the phone. There is, you know, some optics that are very concerning with regards to the Makai Pier. I'm hoping that you and the Senator might be able to put some pressure and an inquiry into where the status of that pier renovations might be. They are continuously closing the pier to fishermen and fishing families who have They're continuously closing the pier to fishermen and fishing families who have used the pier for for a while. But there is a significant amount of vehicles on the pier from people that work on on the pier. And so, you know, if they're going to close it to the public, they should close it to everybody else. And that's kind of been something that we've been fielding over the last couple of years of it being closed. And so if there's, if there's an opportunity for you folks to follow up with the director and figure out what what are some of the timelines, what are some of the gaps that are needed, and how do we potentially look at some opportunities for access for fishing to the pier in certain ways that might be safe for the public, but also for them to address some of the ways in which they're being looked at right now, because it's it's problematic that they have full reign of the Makai Research Pier and no one else from the public is able to do so. There's no use of construction, you know, safety gear, none of that. So it's just something that I want to raise tonight if we can figure that out. And then lastly, Army Corps of Engineers, do we have any contacts in Army Corps of Engineers from the state level that might be helpful with us trying to find reports on previous work done in our community? We're hoping to kind of revisit some of those old projects and see what we might learn from that history. So if you have any contact or if you know of any direction that we might be able to put an inquiry into, we would greatly appreciate your your follow-up with the Senator as well to see how we might learn from some of that work being done in the in the past. But those are just three things that I I wanted to bring up to our state representatives, and we'll also make sure that the Office of the Governor is aware of that as well. Mahalo, Nui, for your time this evening and your service. We look forward to continuing to learn with you. Thank you so much.
Okay, I I can look into the last two issues that are very specific on the EA versus EIS. It's a little more general, and so I'm going to leave that for Senator Lee.
Sounds good. I think at some point we'll all have to take a stab at it. So we'll look where everyone's
Yeah, no, I I'm not sure exactly what you mean. So maybe some some offline clarification would be good.
Will do. We look forward to it. Mahalo, Nui. Members, we're going to go to our last presenter this evening. Excuse me, we have two more. Governor Josh Green's representative, thank you so much for standing on with us this evening. We really appreciate you, Tony. Thank you very much. The time is yours, sir.
Aloha, community. Just two things I wanted to highlight from Governor Green's August newsletter. The first is Governor signed two hundred fifty-three bills into law. A lot of these bills do affect our communities from affordable housing to Kupuna Wellness to community safety. So please take a look if you're interested. There's some links on that newsletter. In addition, the Oi Department of Agriculture has offered small-scale farming grants that the deadline has been met today at noon. But the good news is grants will likely be offered again next year to the public. I want to encourage the community, if you haven't already done so, to do sign up for Governor Green's newsletter and subscribe. I'll put the link in the chat so you can subscribe to the newsletter and get the newsletter at the beginning of the month so that you can take advantage of any time-sensitive opportunities like this in the future. I just want to follow up on a couple follow-up questions from last meeting. One of the questions was, has the state removed or deleted the use of the term crown lands? So I did follow up with DLNR, and they provided a statement that they are not aware of deleting or removing land designations. DLNR does not use the term crown lands. What is referenced is the trust status of the land, whether those lands are part of of the public trust established by Section 5B of the Admission Act or are under the Hawaiian Homes Land Trust. DLNR has not or does not use the term crown lands in their software called the Public Land Trust Information System. However, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Kipuka Database does use the term crown lands. So that's from DLNR. Another follow-up that I pursued was through the Department of Agriculture on a pest update. Unfortunately, we couldn't get anybody from DOA up here this evening. Nobody was available, but next meeting they'll try and make it out. They did give me a quick update. Unfortunately, CRB activity has increased exponentially on the, in on the Windward Oahu. The Department of Ag is developing a rapid response team for CRB. What they're doing right now is promoting green waste cleanup. So they're providing the number six four three pests for information on proper green waste handling. If you or anyone you know has a large piles of static green waste on their property that you see, we encourage you to call that same number six four three pest with the address or or the owner information so that DOA can follow up with them and educate them on green waste, proper green waste handling to address CRB grubs. In addition, DOA will be offering netting for free to the public. I'm going to share that info information with Chair to terminate that information once that becomes available. And yeah, that that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Tony, thank you very much for the update. I know we're running a little bit behind schedule. Take a few questions, and then we'll move on. So Lulu?
Hi, sorry, this is Lardus Malan. I know they're doing the free netting. Question on the pheromone. Will you guys be also, will DOA be giving out free pheromone? Because for the CRB beetle, sorry, my bad.
Okay, I can follow up on that. I'm not sure if they're offering
The netting helps, but if you get the pheromone, you can make a trap for it which will entice the beetle to fall into it, and then you can catch it. And then my other question is, so I know Governor Green signed or not signed, but cut the funding for invasive species. What does that mean? Considering that CRB has gone crazy, we have fire ants, obviously have others, other invasive species. But what is that? I know the funding has been cut, so what is that, what's going to happen now?
Oh, I believe they're still funding for invasive species. I can follow up on that. How we're going to make up for that loss in in addressing invasive species. I'll get back to you on that.
Great, thank you.
Mahalo, Lulu. Any questions for the governor's office? Seeing none, anyone from the public? Seeing none, Tony, I just said, if you can add into that request that you're going to submit back to the Department of Ag. There was a request from some community members that are trying to do their due diligence with regards to CRB. Those early detection nest boxes, test boxes or kits that was requested by some of our people in the community, they feel it would help benefit them to utilize them as a trap, opposed to, I think, some of the original design of what that was used for. Is there any system in place or any reference or resource that might be helpful for them to to receive that as well? Is that something within the Department of Ag's inventory to pass out? I know perhaps maybe OIS might have, or maybe the CRB Response Outreach Guys might have, but if if they could speak to that as well, or if there's a resource that they could provide, I think the community would want to be involved in that way.
From my understanding, the test, the test boxes just measure the population of CRB. But it's not a way to control. I can, I can follow up on that, though, and I'll get back to the
If they can come in and see, because some of our community are want to use it in that way. And I think that's great if they're trying to address something that's been now officially, at least from the CRB outreach side, officially given up on. Yeah. Karen, you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up. Thank you. I'm using the ferom traps because we were able to get some of those from our workshop that we hosted with UH. But one of my neighbors is using the early detection variety of the trap or and he just puts oil in the bottom of it, and he has caught more beetles than I have in my traps. So I know that those, the original intention was just to see if they're out there, but in our neighborhood, they're working to catch and eradicate. They're just expensive, and so we, I haven't spent the hundred and twenty-five dollars a trap to get those. But anyway, I appreciate it, and that is our experience that they are effective at trapping the beetles.
Mahalo. Yeah, if if the the department would speak to that, I think that would be very helpful. And if there's a way for, you know, right now, it's it's in the hands of the community essentially, right? They're saying, hey, figure it out. These are, these are solutions that the community has figured out that works for them. And so I think the department does have a kuliana to to meet the community where they're at. And so if you could ask them that question out, I think that would be very helpful as well.
One thing I wanted to share with the community is I I do have coconut trees myself, and what I've been using is sand. I've been packing the ground with sand. I know the Philippines have been dealing with and fighting ranachus beetle for years now, and they've sent sent tree kids up trees with buckets. That may not be an option for most people, but if you do have shorter trees, that that could be something that could be done. That's what I've been doing personally.
I appreciate that. That's one way. I noticed we have two more hands. I don't want to get too far into it again because we're behind schedule, but is there a pressing question? Like, I don't want to become a discussion. Karen, Lulu?
The only thing I wanted to add, this is Karen, is just that access to a bucket truck would be helpful. Our trees are tall. We have twenty-three. We can't pack them with sand without a bucket truck. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to say the same comment. I have about fifteen trees, maybe ten of them are, I don't know, extremely high up. So there's no way that you can net them and put sand on them. My smaller trees, not an issue. That's why I was hoping with the netting and the pheromone that does help. Don't get me wrong, netting the mulch, perfect, but I'm getting rid of as much mulch as I can, so I don't have that issue. But I need traps to capture them. I've already lost four trees. And I'm not cutting them down because I'm hoping they stay in there and not keep going to other trees. But that's only going to cost more for my neighbors as well as myself.
Thank you. So we'll look forward, if Tony can take those concerns over to the department. Clearly, there are people that are prioritizing and trying to get ahead of this, so the the more help they can provide, the better. And to be very frank, that is their kuliana of the state. So, you know, we all have a kuliana to do it, and any help is is relatively important. Mahalo, Tony, for hearing those comments.
Thank you.
Tony, I do want to just make sure that we're clear to, I mentioned to our state legislators, you know, the idea of the EA, EIS processes, if there's anyone in the division or the departments that can speak to that at some point in time, I think that'd be helpful. Army Corps of Engineers, if there's any, you know, route to them and the reports that they've done for work in our community, I think that would be helpful as well if the administration can follow up and and let us know. And then lastly, also with the Makai Research Pier, where the status of the Makai Research Pier would be. In addition to our state legislators, I would hope that we could take that back to the governor's office and figure out what what are some solutions to these progressive conversations. Mahalo, Nui. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate you sticking on.
Thank you.
We're going to move on, members, to our Congresswoman Jo Sekuda's office. Do we have anyone from her office this evening? Okay, hearing none. We're going to progress down, members. We have one board business item this evening. It is approval of regular meeting minutes from Tuesday, July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a recommendation to approve?
By Lardus Malan, approve?
Thank you, Lulu. Main motion made by Lulu. Is there a second?
Brenda Wong, I second.
Brenda, thank you with the second. Members, we're in discussion. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We're going to do a roll call vote, members. If you can turn on your your cameras for the vote, we will go ahead and take that vote. We have been approved, excuse me, motioned and seconded. The item is to confirm and approve the Tuesday, July ninth, meeting, twenty twenty-four meeting, excuse me. You can vote aye or aole or kanalua, aye, yes, aole, no, kanalua, abstain. Mahalo, Rachel.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And any of those opposed, nay? And then any abstentions? Okay, with that, we have all members present voting for the minutes to be approved. Thank you.
Mahalo. Thank you, members. Gang, we are at meeting announcements, Neighborhood Commission Office. Do we have any announcements from the NCO office, Rachel?
Nothing right now.
Thank you. Next meeting of the Neighborhood Commission, tentatively scheduled Monday, August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, six p.m. on Webex and at Kapala Mahale First Floor Conference Room one five three. Next Waiala Neighborhood Board meeting will be on Monday, September tenth, twenty twenty-four, seven p.m. will be hybrid. Education Committee is tomorrow, Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, five p.m. Hawaiian Affairs will follow that at six thirty. Parks and Recreation is off this month. They will regain, re they will reschedule for September. Waiala Community Plan is on Thursday, August fifteenth, seven p.m. Here, all of them are here at the public library. Twenty twenty-four Olalo broadcast schedule, Waiala Neighborhood Board meetings are broadcast on Olalo Channel forty-nine on the fourth Monday of the month at nine p.m. and on the first and third Saturdays of the month at three p.m. Video replay is available for those that are interested. Oi Kai Neighborhood Board number one is scheduled on the last Thursday, Kahaluu Neighborhood Board twenty-nine on the second Wednesday. Kane Ohe Neighborhood Board number thirty on the third Thursday, and the Kailua Neighborhood Board thirty-one scheduled on the first Thursdays of the month. Please refer to the NCO office for more clarifying details. That brings us to the end of the meeting, members. We appreciate everyone's time, committee, community, for those that are participating online and here in person. Mahalo, Nui, for your voice and your presence. We'll bring us to our closing. If there's anyone that would like to close us off in Pule this evening, we would love to hear your voice. Anybody offering Pule this evening to close us off? Okay, seeing none, wopulekako. We can do ho'onani if you guys know it. Mahalo. Mahalo, Nui, akakou apo. Remember to sign up for the mailing list if you folks have not done so yet. We look forward to working with you folks continuously, and we'll see you folks in the next meeting. Ahuiho, malama ya'oko.
Ahuiho.
This meeting is adjourned at seven forty-seven.